Good morning, Commissioners. Public hearing of March 19th. Chair Cal.
Here.
Commissioner Blans. Commissioner Chaffin.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Here.
Commissioner Damminger. Commissioner Olm. Commissioner Kristensen.
Here.
Commissioner Holt Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Loffde. Commissioner Ratt. Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. We're going to start today's preservation department public hearing agenda with item number one, LPC 19-32695, an application for certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, Block 25, 50, Lot 59, 133 10th Street, and 321 historic district from Italianate style rowhouse built circa 1861. The application is to construct a rear yard addition, alter the front facade and replace windows.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carolyn, National Preservation Staff. The subject property is located on the north side of the street, 1st block between Franklin Street and Manhattan Avenue. The performance to the south of here. So first, at the rear yard, the applicant is proposing for a wooden glass addition to construct a multi rear yard addition. Second, they are proposing to raise the rear facade to match the height of the proposed rear addition. And finally, at the front facade, they are replacing windows. As seen in this historic district map, so the property sits at the edge of the district. So when looking at the context of the rear yard, we're only looking at this half of the building. And here are some historic images of the building, the McQuaid's tax code, 19th place designation photo, and the front condition of the facade. And here are existing condition photos of the rear. There's currently the rear facade of the sustained extension with the rear deck. And then further in, there is this wooden glass, like a two-story type of condition seen here. It's deteriorating. And then, just to give you a little more context, what is this facing, the rear yard and the deck? The house, to the right, there is another house over, some other houses here, and then a church. To the left, there are existing extensions of the flats, there are three flats buildings on the left that you see. And nowhere is this a typical form of a third area. This is just to give you the context of the streetscape. There are a variety of houses on this side of 10th Street. The other side, there are more intact rows here. You have the house, which is here. To the right are flats buildings, to the left is another house. They're both pulled out as row houses, but as you can see, neither are part of a row. A church, another house, and then it just kind of goes along the streetscape that way. So again, here is the existing extension. Here is the existing glass addition. So with the proposal, we remove this and bump it out to here, and then install with it. And then at the front facade, they're proposing to replace these one-over-one windows with aluminum five, one-over-one windows. So again, this is a house that was constructed in 1861. It's called out as an Italianate style, so historically, the windows would have been sold with it. And so there's some final information showing existing windows. And I'll lead up to the architects here. It's small architecture and the smaller storage room.
Good morning. My name is Courtney Wallace. I'm the president of the Small Architecture. We're here in the half of our client, a public agency, and thank you for the introduction. What Kevin said is covering the robust service of the project. So I'll go through sort of where we are to date the process and why this is being proposed. So our clients wanted to expand into rear yard, and we've gone through design approval on the apartment buildings, and we had to agree to work and got approval there. So this, this is, oh, sorry. The extension back here, you can see extends past the existing portion of the building here. It does not go past where the main rear apartment building here is. And like Kevin said, this is designated a Italianate process, so it is not actually part of a row. Our proposal also includes new windows at the rear, new windows at the front, and just rehabbing the existing course and the rear, continuing the architectural dental mold that moves around part of the existing structure. So again, at the block, the designation line ends midway through this block, so the rear yard is half designated and not a ground street. Original historic photographs showing one-over-one, not to the same as to the top, and during the existing structure in the back. Again, this is the dental mold that we're applying on the building around, and the new structure will be comprised of brick to match the existing building. Rear yard photos, rear yard buildings. And again, in the row, what we're designing. And again, you can see we're adding the bulkhead on the roof, railings around the new deck, and railings at the top of the roof also. Two doors to the deck. This is the existing door to the deck. And you can see on this side, there are no existing crown, architectural, and on the rear, this portion, we can only have a setback. Then this is the deteriorating glass structure. So again, same comments here. There's, again, another, some of the two, existing two family to stay two family, there's the second exit from the basement level here. And this is, these two floors will be for the owner. And here's a section of our sightlines of the bulkhead and, of course, the rear extension. And the plan of the extension, how far extends beyond the original footprint again, which is earlier, we got approval for this. And HVAC condensers on the roof also, and there is these split systems throughout. And then here is where you can see a very small portion of the bulkhead, and some questions about the side windows that were put in back in place for the stair bucket, and adding skylights onto the bulkhead, and there was a skylight in the stair hall that exists. Here's a mock-up of the bulkhead on top of the roof, and some window details of our proposed clad aluminum black.
You're proposing to keep the wood burnt mold around the front?
That's right. And the architaphos at the base.
Actually, a question about your, your brick piece on the back. So if you show a kind of a gray tone for the van where the, where the brick occurs and it's shown in black here, is that a different material or is it just a painted brick? What is the signature?
This might be painted black, but that will be built up of brick.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? We will take public dissonance. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application? Okay, we have a resolution from Brooklyn Community Board One recommending approval, as stated. Any final questions? We have one more question.
Carolyn?
Oh, yes.
The staff recommends, uh, the front windows. We mentioned that the front windows were in this style, two over two. We don't think that any photographic evidence of that, 1940s is a long way from 1970. How confident are you that it will be typical or is it possible, is it possible that what you're saying?
Well, we, what the staff does, for, for any building constructed around certain periods, whether it's like federal or Greek or Italianate, we know that they would have been multi-light, they would have smaller paints, but I'll tell you before I speak to that.
Yeah, just to jump in for a second. So most of the guidance that we rely on, including the windows book, used by the Conservancy many years back, usually puts somewhere around 1870, late 60s, early 70s of wood glass technology, reached a point where it had large pieces of glass, big enough for, for single light windows, double configuration. So I'm not sure if that's the exact date, but that plus just general knowledge of styles leads us always to believe that buildings that would predate that, in this case, it's by eight to 10 years, would have had some sort of multi-light configuration. Now, it wouldn't necessarily have been two over two, but that's a likely configuration for a windowless style.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a motion to close the hearing.
One sec.
All favor? All right, discussion? Anyone like to start on this one?
Well, there's hardly any building to speak of, so no concern there. In addition to that, they're not really doing anything terribly expensive in that. Two, it's not part of a row, so we're not talking anything concerning the top floor. So I'm fine with almost everything, but I think on the, on the front window side, I would go with the recommendation of two over two.
Great, okay, great. In the matter of 12:19, dish, 32695, 133 10th Street, 321 historic district from Italianate style rowhouse built circa 1861. The application is to construct a rear yard addition, alter the front facade and replace windows. I note that the building's sound, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the 321 historic district. I recommend approval and modifications by them. That the proposed work will not damage or destroy any significant architectural features. That the work will not be visible from a public profile. That the design materials and fenestration of the proposed partial width rear addition, featuring brick clad and punched window windows or openings, will be keeping the rear fascades throughout the block and will maintain the historic scaling character of the building. That the brick ornament will be recreated at the new parapet. That because the house is not part of the row, the partial width full height rear addition will not destruct. A consistent and unified row of fascades, and that despite the increased height of the new rear facade, will be consistent with varying heights now that the adjacent buildings. That the proposed addition will not project further into the rear yard and rear extensions at the adjacent flat buildings. That because only half of the block is located within the historic district, the proposed addition will not compromise any significant green space within this block. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the 321 historic district. However, I find that although the 1940s tax photographs show a one-over-one double on store, double on windows of the front facade, the building's 1861 construction date and Italianate style indicates that historical windows would have been two over two double onward windows. Therefore, I recommend that the new windows be two over two double onward to match the historic condition. All favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Item number two, this is LPC 19-36040, an application for certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, Block 30, Lot 4, 53 Pearl Street, in the Dumbo Historic District. Italianate style factory building, built in 1970. Application is to construct an addition, alter the front facade, and install a barrier for access to it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. James, for CLO Preservation Staff. 5153 Pearl Street, located on the east side of Pearl Street between Plymouth and Water Streets. The building was constructed as part of the John W. Masary and Sutcliffe Company complex, which comprised buildings built between 1880 and 1920. The application before use to construct a five-story addition, alter the front facade, and install a barrier for access at the front entrance. Harry Kendall and Joe Preble, EKS, are here to present the proposal.
Thank you, James. Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for coming on the agenda today. I'm Harry Kendall. Please take off your decks now, we'll be in this renovation, along with my Barbie going presence, which is a part of the charge in the design of this project. So this should be an entertaining morning with interesting block history and, and we think mentioning a worthy proposal. The building, we are addressing 52 Pearl. In the Dumbo Historic District, of course, it's on a block bounded by Pearl, Water, Jay, and Plymouth Street. And it is a four-story street front, built with circa 1880. It has no known architect. It was built for the, we'll, we'll talk about the block's history, but it is, the designation report jokes, as we know, on the, on the extrinsic history of the block and the company that occupied it for many decades. And it, it, of course, mentions the architecture described as an Italianate build, factory-type building with glass in the building, on sills, that it's affiliated cornice, but essentially utilitarian. You will see here that the, the brick altered in 1970, the brick had been painted quite some time ago. I recall it more hard and painted in multiple coats of harding on some of the lower floors. The ground floor was extensively altered, the sandstone or ground zone cornice, water table rather, and linels have been also painted over. It has a partial fifth floor, so it's four stories on the street, significant setback, intentionally applying wing wall, and a, and a partial fifth floor. So next. I'm, I'm next. Pardon me. Existing building on the left, we are proposing to remove the fire escape as well as the ladder. You'll, you'll see that peeking above the principal street facade is our additional floors, you're seeing the topmost floor here, it determines the angle, we'll tell you why. It carries an intriguing message. And, um, a closer look at what exists, you can see the fire saves, you can see the brick which is, as in Sam, you can see there is no fire finish on the brick any longer when we fill back the harding. We are, we've been waiting for the weather break to do a series of tests. We have a report from a material conservation consultant. She is not convinced we can't save the brick. We're going to be showing it in this presentation as painted. And the previous document, the block, was a paint company, many of you know this because you've seen, you've recently proved other buildings in the block also occupied by the Maggeri Paint Company. We don't think it's inappropriate that it, that we get it painted, finished renewed, given that it is period, but we really do love to bring it back to the natural brick, but we're skeptical or highly unassertive if that's possible. We will be continuing with a series of tests to see if that's possible. And we will be changing, we are changing the courtyard, which is barely visible in the inside, the shallow courtyard, we'll be removing some of the ways it's possible we will have a trove of bricks with which to match and rebuild the front facade. All this is uncertain, so from now on, we'll, we'll see it as a, as a painted facade, nor do we that in sort of, we, we want to take a restorative approach to the, to the front facade and, and then it has to be fully done. So I said that we showed that one slide where you, you see that our additional floors quite peeking out of the main facade. We're, we're not presenting it in the visible, all this is very visible from any number of angles, we will walk you through those. But so here, across the Pearl Street triangle, on Anchorage Street, you see our building, the relatively recently approved building for calling the Dumbo Townhouses. It, it reads as five stories, it's actually four stories plus a, a fifth story setback penthouse. And in the slide on the right, you see two of our additional floors, closer floor, additional floors, rising intriguingly from the middle of the block, as different word of different buildings, and it presents a somewhat different character. And again, as I said, I'll try not to say any kind of carried message. So let's look at this block front on Pearl Street. It's, there are four individual buildings. There are two 19th century buildings, fourth to five stories, four stories respectively, but ours, of course, is a five-story building also with a partial setback floor. One or two-story 20th century building, which we don't believe to contribute to, and, and the more recent 21st century piece of contemporary architecture. This is, of course, one would say, this characterizes the Dumbo today, a preponderance of 19th century buildings, some industrial strength and sometimes diminutive 20th century buildings, and then a flowering of just a great design, you hope to join it in Dumbo, and then it's a very intriguing setting, as I saw. Our block was put, our, our, this somewhat, and not uncharacteristic, it's a somewhat varied and forest block. And the, the chorosity is the result of the combination of lower scale and taller scale structure. And that is, that phenomenon is changing and reducing, but honestly, the blocks in Dumbo are growing somewhat of a chorus. And that's something, something gained and something lost. This is a photo of how you saw into the block from the corner of Pearl and Water for years. And on the right, not very good photo, but this composition, a figure on a line of graphic, is the Dumbo Townhouses building. And you can see that, you know, this is our partial fifth floor, this is our shallow courtyard, this is rising structures behind us. You can sense a mystery of the interiors of the blocks, and that mystery reduces a little bit. But so, digress a little bit and talk about what this mystery is. This was the Globe White Light and Ding Works. They had its employee in John Masery, and he was an innovator, and the Ding Works became the Masery Paint Company. It was in our building and the two next-door buildings, so that was, their height should have been uncertain in this map. And then it grew more and more through the block, took over essentially all of the block except for on build sites, and continued up base. It's an intriguing thing, this was a five-story building, you can see it here with the courtyard. It grew, it got filled in, it grew to five stories, and the other, there's people with five stories here, and it grew in a setback portion across the adjacent lot and created our fifth floor. So there was this, and this is again indicative of blocks in Dumbo, there was this joining of buildings, especially on the inside, as the industrial processes demand more space or less space, or more venting, or whatever. And so the Masery Paint Company grew entirely in this block, and one was very rare of it. And again, this, talking about the characteristics of Dumbo, the famous, this company works, you know, with its smoking stacks and the carriages delivering conditions and machine parts, our block, similar phenomena over the lower scale building. This is Jay Street, this is the opposite block from us. You see that, that it was, you know, you were aware of goods coming out, you probably aware of the new boost, and you, you understood the industrial activity that was driving this area. And sometimes it was coffee bags or other goods being pitched or lowered out of window of the car. There was, the streets of Dumbo were characterized by this robust industrial activity. Now they're characterized by something else. They're changed and made into a wonderful area to live in and work in, but in my something often on the game theme, the, the buildings have grown much quieter and more muted as to what's happening inside them, what's happening inside them are arguably a little more ordinary, and, and the streets are alive with something else in the, in the flow of goods. So last, last two sheets of the digression about Masery Paint Company. They were John Masery, I mentioned, was not there, and things that don't even seem realistic as a proper making convention. He invented the resealable paint can. It was a wonder, and allowed paints to be pre-mixed and shipped across the nation. They called their products wearable paints. Here's a wonderful pattern drawing of the idea of a resealable paint can. They had beautiful colors, they were tireless self-promoters, and their paints flowed out across the nation accompanied by handbooks about how to paint. So this composition shows this innovation, this, they've remained America's premier most dominant paint company for six decades. And, and if you interviewed 100 people on the street in Dumbo, no one would know the name of Masery Paints. We look to correct that. But, so this is, you know, this is a heroic photo of the building of the Manhattan Bridge. It actually did carry a train, so it's a little bit of metaphor, not a literal, good of a piece, but it is this nationwide infrastructure evidence in this region that allowed, the Masery Paint Company, one of many companies, it drove creation of the nationwide infrastructure and was in turn driven by its presence. So that bridge, pumping as a real translation, again, as a metaphor, as I said, slices through the, the orthogonal grid of Dumbo, and in the, in the several blocks of which we are very much one, where you're aware of those intersecting geometries, there's a constant sort of frisson and visual interest from the clash of these two things. And to us, the more we observe that, the more this, these intersecting geometries have meaning, and meaning especially for our past tennis, past, the, the blocks' past history. And so this is just a compilation, some buildings incorporate that skew within themselves, some, otherwise, you know, buildings sit in contrast and, do you measure contrast to the, to the bridge? And from blocks which are on the, on the angle of the bridge, you see buildings like the next block, thus, rising above in this, in this intriguing angle nature. So enough from my introduction, we'll get to, to what we're proposing. So this is the existing building, of course. This is a courtyard, which is not the original sized courtyard, but you can think of it. This is the expanded partial fifth floor, and these are the four additional floors, which are angled with an expressive glass and metal facade on this portion angled, at the exact angle of this bridge to, to show a sort of deep sort of intention of our meaning. So on, on the right, you see it progressing. This is to help everyone understand that the characteristics of the existing building, shallow courtyard, partial fifth floor, or third facade. We change the configuration of the courtyard, this is a tough building to convert to residential, the spaces now are not filled with light in air, and by changing the configuration of courtyard, we gain flexibility and, and windows that deliberately light in air according to multiple growing law. We create on these sort of slightly projecting wing walls, and we, so this diagram shows, we pull them out, and what follows is a standard floor. Then we create, as he does in various views, we create a sort of brick container, you know, inside and back wall, it's very light, very calm and utilitarian, and then we replace with this grasp or embrace, this expressive facade, which speaks to the history of the block, the presence of the bridge, and, and the context. Likewise, we're, we're going to 102 feet plus a penthouse, and you can see that in our block itself, there are shorter buildings and there are taller buildings, recently approved, a two-story addition, which you show here on top of Court 2J. You recently proved a two story addition, which you show here on top of Court 2J. We need to build underneath, of course, the buildings in the adjacent block, much taller than the bridge apartment. And right in our blue shed and always aware of it is 30 feet, 33 feet higher than us. And so our building, always shown in the yellow here, is fairly tall in the interior of our block, but well below the height of the adjacent entrance. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Joan to explain our design.
Hi, Joan Cravens, EKRS. So we're standing here, we can see the existing photograph, what we call the Paul Street tunnel. And on the left is the view of that or addition. And on the right, you can see it, just this is, you can just begin to see it pop up. This is not our building, this sits on top of the Dumbo townhouses, which is our first glimpse of the ones that's to come. And I will say one thing, because I think that is important to say. We very intentionally pushed our addition as far back as we could, so that it's well past a required setback. Intentional so that it would keep itself distinct and separate from the primary historic facade. And as Harry said, almost in a collage, like, hey, you can't tell whether it belongs to that building or some other building in the context. So we were very interested in reserving the client, the kind of large character of the existing building, and have our addition be distinctly separate from it. And so we tried for that. So as you move on Pearl Street, now our Avenue Street, whoops, I'm sorry. It does reveal itself in the way that Harry described with this sort of clinking masonry folder. And then the angled facade that picks up the overall ridge. Here again, so we saw earlier, but just to go down a little before, the front facade, we had a, we were unable to keep the lower level as it is, in part because it's image so modified. We need to make accessible access into the entrance of the building. So we needed to find a way to photograph on the building. And we wanted to reestablish the grid of the windows that come down and maintain this, so a very simple and quiet facade while introducing sense that there is new life in the building at this ground level. So that we have sort of brought down, if you can read that, maybe not, you know, the subject. It's a long picture here. These are the entrances, one of the blocks, the steps angle up here. The, some of the facade elements that we will talk about more, which is the colored hands, which we will talk about in a minute. The street though, so that you can understand the story of the building and the streets. But trying to keep our ramp very open, so we develop the facade. We're keeping the sort of structural, sort of, tie rods there because they're there immediately, I should say, right? And we're trying to be respectful of the existing facade. But to talk more about our attention up at the top. As Harry said, we're looking at two influences on the building. This is where we're changing these. We're very much reflect in our rotation of the addition out, speak to the bridge. Apparently, there must be something here, so we look closely at the riveting detailing and the sort of tonality of the Manhattan Bridge. And to add an art scheme, there's sort of larger sort of flame elements that flame with you from the inside, but also kind of looking at the building. We love the texture that the rivets have, these are divots, so it's a kind of pattern that allows light to change, so it's not flat and has some texture that we see in Dumbo. And this goes intended to have some catch. And then within it, we're introducing these sort of slightly colored fins. And in part, that's to reflect the, we're all blessed mason, there will be light control there in the last two. But we wanted to express the kind of unique character of this building and speak to its history that was about to color. And so in any ways, just go back and color, and almost be, you know, there was a delight in the middle images of how the tonality exists when you look at aged brick, when you look at rusted steel, or even, you know, sort of have steel tanks light. And felt that it wasn't simply the color giving this historic story of the Mageri Paint color, but also something that you see in the kind of industrial tonality of Dumbo, where there's those orange tones that speak to the life of the city. In fact, we joke that they invented the Mageri through the Wainsworth Paint Company. These were buildings for historic colors. We wish they did, anyway, it's funny to say that in Dumbo, that happened, the crowded building, it expanded Dumbo. But your color color is really interesting and was important historically. Just some small details, I won't tell all the details, you can ask questions if you like. Bringing, sort of having a painted steel button, so a framing of the entrance that wraps that entrance, reflects our service door and our entry door, so there is a moment of entry. And then our pipe ramp that comes up, or steps come up. A little facility at the front, a lot of it, to see that you can be the facade of the building. And then to just, you know, we want to stop, it always seems that it's quite visible. We know that, we don't want to be uncollected, uncollected about that. This is a little bit of a chemistry, there we are, and it's all explored. But again, trying to frame it in the context of these, I'm sorry, in English, excuse me. Trying to frame it, and Harry calls this as a kind of a, it's not a cabinet, the highest pieces, trying to collect our elevator vault head, so that's its highest point. And trying to break the scale of our collective pieces, so that we understand it as flesh and parts go in the middle of this block. Just to put it in context of recent approvals, sort of despite of what has recently been approved on J Street. And reminding, as I said, that, you know, we spent a lot of time walking around Dumbo, which is a really, it has a very interesting new architecture in Dumbo. And they also recover the story of the building was. So here we have our old swimming refinery with its crystal like glass form that sort of speaks to the history of that building. This was 205 Water Street, was a gold capturing. To us, that always looked like either spoke to the steel capitation or hovering gold pad. But again, this fact that building is a strong inspiration from the very rich history of the world and its manufacturing history. This is an as of yet unbuilt site. And then, of course, you see our kind of masonry rear of the building. We're trying to inspiration from, this is a block line, quiet, sort of recesses and craving of masonry windows, so that it has some scale and some interest, but it's not trying to call attention to itself. And, you know, we aren't the only people asked, or certainly the few that we present to you now. And again, what was approved in a little bit, so we're framing the context of some height that we hope will accept ours. And here we are looking north from Pearl Street. Here again, you can see our, this is our extended wing wall here. We will leave this wall relatively raw, in a way we're not going to clean it up too much, because it has some new texture and that adding on top of it, the grit that we will pick in concert with the existing masonry that's there. And you should be able to see our angled addition. This is just a photograph of what's there now in the context of extended wing wall that we discussed earlier.
Can I just ask a question while you're on that previous interview? What was your thinking when you were moving the, or not calling attention to the lintels on the ground floor, the existing?
Yeah, it's actually a very interesting question and one we're happy to discuss. We didn't because they were, they're not in great shape, they're oddly placed. You know, if you go back to that one. We had the decision, and you know, it could be just a distant decision to discuss, that the best way to sort of reinforce the existing building was to sort of reinforce that very quiet sort of organization of these punched openings. And the lintels are shifted and oblieced, they're not in great shape. I'm not sure how easily they'll be able to be restored. Some of them are different sizes than, I think that, I think that.
You're heavily reconstructing, you're up close and personal with them. Clearly, you're standing when you walk back and face, and suddenly you build up a new surface.
But you're playing a fool with new windows, so why not new windows? Exactly, yeah, I think we'd be very happy to discuss that. I don't think, you know, one takes a, I wouldn't say we should position on it, we had a design take on it, it's not a position. We'd be very open to it.
What we found is that the presence of the ramp and the new loading dock entrance or front entrance kind of made about a third of it, more than a third, on sale by modern. And it seemed more easy to us when you grabbed that floor, hollows here. So we rejected the window that was supplied before framed. It was presaging what you would see above. But again, as I said, we really believed, we went back and forth. It almost happens as if we landed here.
There's also a present, we didn't show, and actually we should have, that a lot of the restore work and even added to Dumbo buildings, where you see a more contemporary addition, you see it again on the street. And so that this kind of dialogue that happens from the park also happens on the street level, where you sense new life creep into some of these older builds. But again, it's not a, you know, it's not a position so much, it was a take. Not even a necessary consensus choice, so definitely open.
Just as a follow up on that question, though, while we're on the ramp. Can you just speak to your decision for putting the larger entrance on the left side as opposed to the right side, where you already have a lot of alterations?
Yes, it had to do with the floor plans. You know, this building is very challenged, but it's really, it's very hand bound in terms of light in air. And we needed, there's plans there, so I'll just start with that, with the ramp, to paint, to paint our light in air to make units viable on that side of the building. So if we were actually access on that side, we lost our ability to take advantage of the existing core, which then expanded on. There also is, you know, not that it's within our minds, but there is a 10 foot gap between our two buildings, so that even though our core is not that large, it gets the extra benefit of that. So by putting that, we started there, of course, because you think we should. But then the core would be, an accident core would be on that side. And we basically would end up with unviable units in terms of light in air and sense of mobility. Is that really?
It's also less complicated. If we don't, if we have a limited amount of facade, the street slopes, we start on the ramp at the higher side, so the ramp fits gracefully within the facade. And so it's a logistic effect, pushing us to have entry on the left addition. I should do a little housekeeping, I believe you will begin, this is an as a right project, we're not seeking any bulk wakers. It is, it is not maxing out at the heart, leaving top hundred, so it's sort of, you know, table.
While you're talking, it's the first, just say it, I'm there, people are there.
That'll, that'll be housekeeping.
Here, there, here, there. Yes, okay, so I do think that we do have this 10 foot gap between the buildings, which is nice, and it does reveal a glimpse that into the site. And, you know, if I happen to see a collection of brick and the old, sort of, you know, sort of another sort of fire stair, you can see a collection of materials. We see ourselves sort of actually sort of increasing sort of that view of collage of brick. We begin to glimpse the thing above, the, what's above. But still saying, this is not too precise, but somewhat messy in a good way, I think, into that gap. And then imposing, you know, sort of, this is an archipelago by Taffy Muthan, an artist. There's been many, many artists, there've been many artists' works under the bridge. And we found that after, just as we were finishing our presentation, and we looked to see that presence of color, actually in the promotional thing about the art piece, there were these resealable paint cans. So on this type of.
In the Dumbo unit office, there's a proportion of this mural retained. And we walked in and we said, what are we looking at? And then it turned out, it was just a dumpster from our site. And it does show you this sort of mix of the sort of utilitarian, industrial, and the sudden works of color seem all that more joyous in this context. Another piece of housekeeping is that our clients, our contract holders for building houses, they will talk to me, the partnership with three, definitely two of them are here. They're very interested to listen to the discussion that ensues in there. Of course, very welcome to be asked questions.
Thank you, thank you. Were there any questions?
Yeah.
Should we sit here?
Tell me a little bit about how you see this volume as relating to the nature of the district. The, you tell, you explained why you placed it where you did, on your angled it, the way you did. And that was a discussion that related to the bridge. And I assume to a desire to set it back to differentiate the version built. But as a volume within a district, how does this volume relate in the nature of the development of that district?
It falls in the category of respect by contrast. It's clearly something new, just like how this volume of the, what we said that were a poor, brittle pad related to something in the district that's purposely different. And so riding out in the middle of the block, obviously, it's not a smoke stack. There were, there were any number of taller structures that were removed some domain. I'm not saying, we have a right to, that there were smoke stacks there. But it is something that is illustrative of a lost history. And it's a bit of a contrast and curiosity in order to signal this.
Can you get back to the grounds for, right? You can understand the logic about looking, keeping the management on the left. Also a little bit about deserving the lintel, division of lintel. You can see the size actually there, right? Have you considered, you give me that?
I think, I think we'd be very open to it. As I just, Harry said, we look at it both ways. And at some point, we should put that to stand and say, we feel good about this in this moment in time. But it's something that, from our point of view, in terms of conceptual framing of the building. And process actually, and I think it's one, again, we haven't planned in many places in our minds, convinced that we've landed in the right place on that. Just one, have been back, because they were, the way that is all new, and is that better than acknowledging that the old ground floor is trying to be just like the facade, but done in a fresh way? And I think that's the thing we have internally. And, you know, as I said, I don't think we feel absolute about this. It was sort of, the position sounds, it was kind of, the place we said, it's all new, all the windows are in locations. We're removing these fragile things that don't land where they want to be anyway. Is that a better scenario than saying, we are really changing this ground floor, which is going to change consistently over time and seeing it in paradise? But I think.
There was a bit of, there's a bit of a irony that three of the four surviving lintels would need to be relocated to put our engines where we came to feel it needed to be. So the residential requirements of this former factory building, of course, it's happened throughout Dumbo. Men of those lintels and sills would either shift or join, or be removed in order to serve a more contemporary composition on the ground floor.
You know, I'd say we'd like to come to your comments and say, we know we did the wrong thing. But, you know, that's just not how it plays out. But, you know, that's just the reality. And I think that we would, you know, I think we had a lot of material debate about this. And we'd have to do a, you know, a different iteration that said, let's show you how it works. And we did keep the lintels and how we had to take the windows in that context.
I'm wrong in saying your header line is considerably below the current header line, Bill? Or somewhat below, or at the same height?
It's the same height, yeah, it's the same height.
It's a loss of living. So in this one, this tie rod, I'm just saying, yeah, I'm looking at that tie rod. So I was, okay. No, I'm sorry, I was looking at the lowest one relative to the top of the window. All right, okay, thanks.
The windows are very oblique, they're too light in air for, but, you know, that's just the condition of our building. Where the sills are high, they're a little bit small. It's a part of management, and we're, yeah, we have, because we're sort of, we are looking to make this better, you know, than what the building is. Because we do have a great fondness for this facade, we kind of want to know the block. And really, as Harry said, we really find to understand the gray coat is possible, gray coat, it's still to maintain naturally. It has a lot to do with the condition of the gray coat. But are your goals to do really, I mean, our basic, I'm sort of a builder, so I hear your promise that lintels take it seriously. We really wanted to respect this facade given that we knew that all time, that we were really, you know, we wanted to push it back, that the facade will, because it's a lot of the facade we want. It's a little bit kind of messy. bit kind of messy now, we wanted to have it feel, you know, like halfway, it was a pleasant one.
Any other questions? We will take public testimony and come back to you. Doreen Gallo.
Good morning. My name is Doreen Gallo. Dear Chair, Commissioners, we ask that the seat of the Delaware Neighborhood Alliance, DNA, that is listing Dumbo Industrial Historic District on the State National Register of 2000 and New York City's Dumbo Historic District Designation in 2007. The Dumbo Neighborhood Alliance has reviewed the application, or 53 Pearl Street, and has thought the LPC would reject this proposal in its entirety. The simplicity of the brick facade generally articulated by its rectangular openings with flat lintels and sills, iron tie broad marks 53 Pearl Street as an example of the reneged factory building constructed during Dumbo's growth as an industrial neighborhood. Built in a circuit at 1880 during a major period of development when manufacturers such as John W. Mazzari and Son were making Dumbo into one of the city's most important industrial neighborhoods. This building contributes to the district for its architecture, structure, and the fact that its owner played a significant role in the area's history. Although the ground floor of this building has been seriously altered, the proposed window openings are generic to the building and should instead match the openings of the upper floors, including the flat lintels and sills. The applicant's request to double the mass of the contributing building Dumbo's historic district is both out of scale, out of character with this structure and its adjacent buildings. While the applicant may be inspired by the Mazzarri paint manager factor to incorporate color into the fins of the proposed addition, we do not believe the application of color as messaging would remind anyone of the building's historical use. This building has four protected rent stabilized loft log units. And the tenants are gone because of the difficulty the owner had to turn the existing build to building to residential occupancy. And I might add that that owner also owned the property, the townhouses are gone, so they sold that property while they had tenants that had lived in 53 Pearl for 36 years. So because of the light and air requirement that run over, there's created this difficulty. Current violations from five years ago exist on the property when the owner illegally did structural work for that unit. Without having rectified previous violations, why are we here to consider this application? It's a speculative, overmasked application. This application does not include a Belgium block sidewalk in front of 53 Pearl Street. It's an important feature to both this building and our district. The Dumbo neighborhood has a necessary infrastructure work being done. However, all of our street work escapes are being destroyed by subcontractors working for utility companies. The LPC approval of all work for the street reconstruction should be reconsidered immediately. Both DOT and MEDC have created false narratives for approval. The agency is responsible for the destruction of our street escapes starting from 1985 and will not be meant to be in the size of future. Just want to make a couple of comments if I may about...
Doreen, your time is running out.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, thanks.
Jonathan Bigjari.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Bigjari. I'm just here to read a letter for Rabbi Akko from the Haman of Dumbo to the Landmarks Presentation Commission. My wife and I have been living and working in Dumbo for the past 14 years. During this time, we have had the privilege to foster, organize, and provide spiritual needs to Dumbo community. Prayer service, community-wide school, holiday programs, and youth programming, individual tasks. Over the years, the neighborhood has gone from primarily industrial and commercial zone, which was all but empty after 5:00 p.m. on the weekdays, to one filled with families, children, artists, and a wide variety of businesses. In the past, a real player to watch and be part of the development. We feel that the proposed building of 53 Pearl Street will be a great addition to the growth of the neighborhood. Its design fits nicely to the existing landscape and skyline and preserves the factory slash industrial atmosphere and that makes Dumbo so unique. We support this project and welcome this project to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren George.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hello. I'm reading on behalf of Alexandria Fika with the Dumbo Biz. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of 53 Pearl Street Projects. We support the application for this building and believe the building's creative, wet-facing facade will be a lovely addition to Dumbo's skyline. The reference to Dumbo's history and the paint factory are powerful nods to the history of the neighborhood as an industrial powerhouse and as the creative epicenter for generations. The mix of modern architecture and historic structure is very Dumbo, reminiscent of Empire Stores, 10 J Street, 205 Water Street, another beloved iconic building from the neighborhood. We appreciate the developer's emphasis on the theme of architecture, a hallmark of modern day Dumbo. This building will be adjacent to Pearl Street Plaza, which is also going to become a mix of historic and antique design, with the construction already approved by Landmarks. The east side of Dumbo is becoming a visually exciting district with so many projects planned for J Street, Plymouth, and now in Pearl. 53 Pearl will keep that momentum going and help set the tone for future projects. Thank you, Yom Yehudah.
Thank you, Krista Belgoth.
Mr. Belgoth, for the Society for the Architects of the City. There are certain regulatory conventions that are often invoked in the language of approvals. A rooftop addition is minimally visible or does not call undue attention to itself. That five-star is with a huge bulkhead partially angled against the grid and boldly striped in multiple colors. Evidently, this application is not aiming to meet such standards, rather it is an artistic creation. We are skeptical of what is on the way to becoming a new routine. Too many designers have been sharing with us where they took their inspiration. In the more extreme cases, this has been from a surprising diversity of images, a turtle, a sugar crystal, or in this case, a paint catalog. Architecture in the street comes without footnotes, without links to click, and the puzzled spectator may find such illusions unintelligible and the product bizarre. A desperate quest to find some viable historic rationale or approval perhaps leads to these strange indications of inspiration. In the ancient world, architecture did not have its own views, but today, apparently, one lives and owns the studios, inspiring practitioners and consultants alike. She sings of factoids about earlier uses and associations of designated buildings, formerly intangible factors, that are now to be transformed into all too solid new spaces, decorated to serve as their own billboards advertising the luxury offices and condominiums of our time. Is it sacrilege to think that such proposals are not compatible with the preservation of Dumbo's historic heritage? Adaptive reuse does not postulate using historic manufacturing buildings as quote tools for a rainbow of visually destructive reconstruction.
Thank you. Jesse Geno.
Good morning. Jesse Geno, Historic Studies Council. HDC asked of a new ground floor window opening stone lintels and match those of the Empire Stores. In regard to the remainder of the proposal, HDC supports the Dumbo community and DNA in asking the commission to reject this out of scale and inappropriate addition. This proposed six-story plus penthouse addition would draft, would work the existing four-story 19th century factory building representative of the 19th century industrial architecture which this district has designated, and one of the buildings that gives Dumbo a special character. The outsized proportions of the addition do not reflect the building that the applicant's opposing uses or base, nor the architecture of the surrounding district. The relationship of colored fins to former interior use of the Mazzarri paint manufacturers is partly abstract and proposal visually comprehensible to passersby. Nor do the brightly colored pins fit with the muscular industrial character of Dumbo. This design seeks to excuse inappropriateness for colorful flash, and this is the goal entirely. Though not peasant in the application, we ask the commission to ensure that the work will not result in the loss of any historic buildings or contractors. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else would like to speak on this application? We do have a resolution from Brooklyn Community Board Two recommending disapproval of the application. They did not object to the changes on the front facade, but the majority found the geometry and the massing and polygon facade of the addition to be noncontextual. Would you like to respond to any of this?
Yes, I'd like to respond to a couple things. One, Doreen's, her line of quotes about the previous owner, that the reason, one of the reasons there's extended contract area, and our clients do not get the owner, that there's conditions to turn the building over, and the legalized conversion, that is ongoing. So our clients are seeking to start afresh, I think the proposal shows it, and we're not part of the loss of any tenants to this, from this building. It's entirpating now. Secondly, I deeply respect Krista Bell and her concern that it's all a bit much, but I'm, we're pretty proud to be, to the degree that we're standard bearers of an architecture that is not just quietly looking to face itself and rather see something. And I think there are, we have found there's lost histories that really are significant to the understanding of the district, and we agree that we can make them visible. And what I was saying to Michael earlier, that respect for our past history is not always, or I think not even often, bettered by mimicry or even self-faciness. I think that this district, possibly of all, a robust architecture honors a robust context.
Okay, any final questions? Okay, so one motion to close the hearing? One favor?
Aye.
So this is our interesting project for this week, I pray. Would anyone like to start? John?
I'll put myself out there so I can have the arrows flinging at me. Without being an advocate for mimicry, which I don't think is what I'm doing, I am largely in agreement with what Krista Bell had to say. This is a rooftop addition, and we do repeat the notion of minimal visibility and not calling undue attention to itself. And I think that indeed what this does is exactly the opposite. It is not minimally visible. And the applicant, I think, acknowledges that. It does call undue attention to itself. It does say something. And what it says to me is, is, "Look at me." And while sometimes that works, sometimes it goes against what we are trying to do with a community, for the record. I am stuck in the Pleistocene era. I voted against the turtle and the sugar crystal as well. And now, to go just one more detail, I think the front facade of the building, if we were to approve anything, we need to figure out another way to deal with the accessibility issue. I think the, when we look at that, I don't really often advocate for a lift, but we're taking out the entire front of that building, and there's got to be some other way to get accessibility to that building. I don't know what that is, but I think we've got to think about it. And I do think that in addition, that at least we can ask is to have the front of the building resemble something it might have been before.
Do you... Dumbo's are really interesting. First, I want to thank the applicants, actually for sharing their thinking and the history of this particular building. It's fascinating, and it is nice to know that it inspired, I did notice some of the photos that Pittsburgh Paints is, a district that has a location around blocks, and there still is a present, presence of a paint company in the area. So, great and part of the landscape of a neighborhood that today is this very interesting amalgam of, you know, original manufacturing buildings that have been restored and in many cases reused, in the same way and in different ways. And also the addition of newer buildings that in the majority of cases really add to a compliment what's there. I just want to make a few, I have a few thoughts about the building first. I just have to say, I love this facade in its simplicity, through something just sort of special about the little crosses and the way they're traveling on the surface, and they make their way into, in a playful way, into the cornets. And I think they're great, and to the extent that the work that's done on the, on the front of the building, you know, continues to showcase them, which does whether it's going to be brick or painted, that's wonderful. I do feel that the, you know, the rhythm of the windows and in their, you know, original configuration is wonderful, and it seems like it disconnects to me at the base without the lintels. And I would recommend putting them back in, even with the, you know, one-over-one configuration. I just think it's, it's more cohesive. I want to also speak about the entrance, but not until I talk about the addition. I don't have a problem with the fact that the addition is at an angle, and that it, you know, looks to run along the same lines of Manhattan Bridge, makes sense, and it actually keeps it a little more, it's not, it's not as bulky. I think that that fits in well with the surrounding buildings, but I do think it's too hot. And it doesn't, that doesn't reflect the nature of what's going on in terms of the massing of the street. So I would recommend bringing it down in size. Which would mean that your colorful lintels are in the windows would be really more of a special, something special that the, that the occupants in the building would know about it, as do the people on the street. I mean, that's okay with me. And then just to come back to the facade, in terms of the entrance, I feel like your very nice ramp somehow just competes a little bit too much with the colored lintels in the entranceway. And it's not, if you go back to page three, so you can take a better look at it, someone could do that, I appreciate it. Yeah. Oh, that was another page, too.
Yeah, it repeats twice.
Okay, wherever it is. I don't know, that just seems kind of busy to me. And I guess I feel like, I love the ramp, to me that would be enough, but if you'd rather have the, you know... But if you'd rather have the, you know, the colored lines, then I would simplify the ramp. And then finally, this, you know, staff refers, or people have referred to Belgium block papers. I don't know if they addressed it. I guess I'd just like to hear more from staff about this to get a sense of whether or not this is something that... It's communicated despite this application.
I mean, I don't believe any aspect of the sidewalk work was something put on the list of items for the crews to reduce. I think there's an assumption that there will be staff up working that did utilities or that nature to reset in time to match the store condition. So that's our expectation on that. And just to note, we have been, as of late, working even more closely with DOT to try to address standards and process for the use of certain types of paint materials.
That's good. Michael?
Very interesting project. Thank you for your usually, for your compelling presentation. Lots to think about. There's a lot I like about the project, but I also think that it needs to be vetted in. I think it is actually a very good thing. You were saying, Gene, that the bridge is an advantage point from which this is considered. I personally think that the bridge is a public way and that all projects and their visibility should be assessed from a public way. And that's a public way. So I think its view there is good and interesting. However, I think that the... The massing, the way that a building is added to, the way the building is formed, is very much a characteristic of its, of the district in which it finds itself. I think that that creates the district in many ways. Just like the rhythm of ground stones creates our slope or Ridgeway. The rhythm of industrial buildings, which is a more perhaps added rhythm, but it definitely has its own characteristics that the specifics of this place characterize the Dumbo district. And I think that the mid-block tower, as it's right, doesn't really exist here. And I think that, that's not a doctrinaire comment, but I think it's an experiential one. I think that one would experience this volume in relation to the other volumes in the surrounding blocks as unusual. And I think that that's a cue as to why it would be inappropriate in its current configuration. I think the applicant was right to point out that this district has a lot of very creative roof competitions. But we wouldn't approve competitions. The ones that might be work best are the ones that are kind of blocky objects that read as rooftop volumes, that are in the same language and on metric expression and scale as things like bulkheads or elevator overruns or water towers. There's a scale to those gorilla cats and other things that sit on top of buildings that lets the buildings stay as the dominant feature of the composition and yet kind of read as sculptures or things placed on the existing buildings. And in a way, come to enhance those buildings without competing with them. Here, I think the more appropriate analogy in terms of scale and relationship might be the Samson building in Meatpacking Area, Morisachi thing, where, you know, the scale of the addition lies with the scale of the original and engages in a dialogue with the original. And in the case of the Samson building, the thing on top read as a thing. It has a three dimensional quality that's treated as an object. This, in a way, the decision to have three of the four surfaces of this volume to try to hide itself with the brick, right? Using the brick, having it to be a, say, party wall expression, as the applicant said, I think works against that interpretation. Making the building seem more of a building or an extrusion in its neighborhood as opposed to an object. So I think if you're going to try to pursue the object approach, I'm not saying necessarily should, because it has its own challenges and limitations. I think that the way that the three other walls are treated have worked against you. Another thing about those three walls that I would bring up is that there is a characteristic to the Dumbo district. I think it is a kind of blockiness, solidity, large boned scale that is expressed very much in the side and rear walls of buildings that are visible because the buildings are at varied heights. In this case, the design over articulates those facades by having reveals, inset, changes in tone, kind of verticality of expression where things are linked like a kind of David Grohl 1960s housing kind of expression. That, while I think it's aesthetically attractive, I don't think that it's, I don't think it helps those facades read with the mass and simplicity that the district expresses, for me. So I think that the basic volume placement and treatment of the addition, top additions is problematic. I don't really have a particular solution in mind. I'm sure that this applicant can find eight others that I'm sure that have drawn up already that might address some of these comments. But I think that there's something, you know, Gene's idea of ignoring it would certainly make it more, less impactful and have better proportion in its relation with the base. But I don't, you know, I think there are probably other solutions as well. I think that something that was more, less reactive to the angle and more kind of just sat sitting on top of the building might work. Because that is, again, the nature of the district. It's a very blocky district, a lot of setbacks. Certainly not more than one story, rooftop setbacks. I think that our approvals lately have been in line with that. I think that the use of color is fantastic. I disagree with Christabel on that one. And I think that obscure thoughts by architects is a good thing. And it's the kind of things that over time makes people ask, "Why did they do that? What was their thing about color or lions or arches or god knows what that makes people stop and ask and that's what makes the city cool?" So I think that in and of itself, the use of color has a reference. Even though it's obscure, I think it's fantastic. Certainly this district is something the district can take. I think that the storefront, I generally agree with the comments that... My reaction to the ground floor is that it is over sanitized. I missed the inclusion in the presentation of a 1940s tax vote, which I don't think was part of the application. I would like to see how that storefront or that street wall developed. Maybe there are ways to... I think part of the problem, I think, is that it's over sanitized a little bit. You know, this is a building in a district that shows its wear on its sleeve. And I think that the decision to try to clean it up goes against the nature of the district. I think the building itself shows scars of modification on the ground floor. And I think you shouldn't be afraid to keep those and even add them. I'm okay with the large entrance, although I think that the pier between the large entrance and the window next to it is a little bit too skinny. I think that Gene's comments about the ramp are probably correct, that the design of the ramp front and the ramp itself may be a bit too decorated and deprest. But I think that all that's pretty easily addressed. That's it.
Diana?
Yeah, I agree with Michael's comments about the verticality of the tower, which just seems that a tower, a purring structure doesn't seem appropriate to this district and that probably that is exacerbated by its being broken up and wasn't more interesting from certain aspects. But at the same time emphasizing that verticality. I agree with the shape and that I'm actually okay with the shape and the colors, you know, the sort of distinctiveness that the architect was aiming for in the other facade or front facade. But I do find that the, it's, the fact that you can see it over the front facade and also from the Pearl Street, the Triangle and Pearl Street, the way that it looms over the other building and the existing building there, I find, I think it's really just, it's too ma... Its mass is too big as perceived. Maybe there's a way to do something with setbacks and something that's Michael suggested, but it's just... I would, I think you shouldn't see it with the front facade, definitely. I don't think you see too much of it coming from certain aspects on the front straight side. Some of the other facades is what's troubling to me. I mean, excuse me, I have professional experience. I agree with John and Gene's comments about the handicapped access, that there should be a solution that's less competitive with the front facade. And I think the front facade, the original, was very charming. And the more that it has that appearance even on the first floor would be desirable from my point of view. So there would be some modification there. John, I think that that's fine.
Thanks, Diana. Emma?
Well, I thank the applicant for the thoughtful presentation. The professional design, the professional gesture that's appropriate. If you go to page 12, the view that I think is the most... Can you talk up just a little bit? Sure. The view is the most... Alex, you know, and lacking in corporate district, the district is the best view. And my thought about the consideration of your facades, this really does feel to be alien to the district. And whether that means they should be simpler or they should have more articulation of conch that we make that really better to the district and the surroundings. The fact that I wanted this to be quiet, but it really does feel alien to you. And you can't really tell whether it's a building or an addition in that it would be this particular view. Also, it really, the overall height of the walls in the existing building, that's probably by the angle and the articulation of the fins. I think it's, you know, you see it from normal distances. It has its own structural quality. And again, that goes back to the comments that Michael was making about whether this is an addition or whether this is an extension of the existing building. It kind of is fighting against itself a little bit. And I agree with the comments on the ground floor. Putting the lintels back would definitely help and simplify the ground. But I understand the reasoning. And I think it's fine to relocate the entrance to make it work. I just think there is too much going on in comparison to the rest of the facade.
I agree with everything Emma said. I have my page to play, I still have... No, okay.
Just want to echo what Michael has said. Starting with the base, I have less of a problem with the ramp because, you know, the American with Disabilities Act has been enforced for almost 30 years, three decades. And I stand to see that so many buildings are still inaccessible, starting with the MTA to say the least. And then there's the practical function of whether there's a lift versus a senior or a walker. And I think from practical standpoint of view, I have less of an issue with this type of industrial treatment, whether you see meatpacking or tripeca or Dumbo. So I have less of an issue. I think Michael is correct in that even though the march, the reference to the massery and the paint, the colorful is a very nice treatment. I agree this is a public thoroughfare. I like the angle in reference to the context with the bridge. And I do see that even though, even if you were good to reduce the height and the bulk of the building, the color reference may be understood if it comes to be. And I think that, I think we're all in agreement that it is, the lintel should be restored on the ground floor, that you have an approach, either you paint the, you carry the line down from the windows down. But I think Michael has hit it upon the, right on the point, which is that it may be over sanitized for such an industrial manufacturing district. As to, I'm glad that Michael pointed out about, you know, the back three sides, you know, the foreside to the facade. You did a very nice treatment to the Manhattan Bridge side, so the public can see the angle and the reference. I think most of the members that are having an issue is whether you're either reducing bulk or you do some sort of different treatment around the three sides.
Okay. So I think we've heard from almost everybody, except myself. And I do think that, you know, I think it's an interesting thing. I think that what we do is we listen to architects' stories. And I think it's important for architects to be able to express their vision within the context of a store character. And so I do think that it can be very interesting to have inspirations. And I guess there's always a balance of making sure that the inspiration is legible in some form or not in a convenient way. And not, you know, too, in the case of the industrial district, too designed, that you do some liquidiness of the interior character. But I think that, so I think that there is kind of a round table sense of appreciation for the inspiration of colors and the fins and even the angle and how that relates to the bridge. But I think there's a typology question here. And it's really about the form and geometry of this addition in the center. And, you know, it's either, there's certain, this was mentioned, scale for rooftop accretions of the district. And then there's kind of a boxy massing of buildings in the district. And this, you know, I think is sort of doing neither. And, you know, one could make it more like an object. I think those were some of the discussions we had around the additions on these two buildings in the foreground here. But since the approach is to make it look like it could be a building behind, then maybe you can think about the mass of the building. And so there's a couple of ways we're going to think about it. But ultimately, I think it does mean reducing the size of it. Because I think that you won't get something that's more boxy or proportional to rooftop accretions unless there is some reduction in size. Something that will be part of your exercise. And so we'll close the hearing today and we'll see you back soon. Thank you for such a... Really good talk. We have a motion to close here? All in favor?
Okay, Commissioners, the next item is item number 3, LTC 19-34587. As I'm sure the application for a certificate of appropriate history for Brooklyn. Block 235 Lot 71, 178 Hick Street, Brooklyn Heights Historic District. We provide the Row House, that came in 1946. The applications to all windows in this particular facade. Good morning Commissioners, I'm Charles Tchou, Preservation Staff. This item is 178 Hick Street. I'll be presenting the background information on behalf of the applicant. Application for 40 today is for exterior work at the existing nonoriginal and altered metal at the rear facade. Including removing two, two nonhistoric windows at the second and third story. Removing masonry to combine into openings. And installing a multi-light metal and glass window assembly within the enlarged opening. The work also includes removing a nonhistoric door, removing masonry at the middle, and installing a multi-light window and large system, uh, sorry. A multi-light window and door system at the enlarged opening. While select areas of the rear facade are partially visible from select damage points at Willow Street, this work will not be visible from public interest. Staff level rules do allow for the combining of two openings vertically between the bottom two floor levels, provided the windows incorporate a spaniel or horizontal element of at least twelve inches to break down the scale. However, this does not meet staff level rules as the proposed modifications combine openings at the second and third, uh, second and third levels. And because the windows do not incorporate spaniel or horizontal element. The applicant has also proposed additional scope in the rear yard and roof, which is shown in the elevation. However, this additional scope all complies with staff level rules. Only the new window and door assemblies with modified openings do not.
So strip the two openings on the L, the door and then the hallway, the second.
Correct. The applicant is here to answer any questions and further discuss their proposal.
Hello, I'm Larry Khan, the Architect of Project. The new openings in the L relate to a staircase, opposing staircase on the interior. On the left, we have the existing section of the building, on the right is the proposed. The building is a two-family home. There's an existing family to remain on the top two floors. And our applicants is the basements one and two. And so the intent of the new staircase is to create an interior circulation system for them to go within their apartment without having to go into the public hallway. One of the reasons for the location of the proposed staircase is that the building has a much larger building directly to the southwest, and so it's light deprived. And by putting the staircase in this location and having the door to openings will allow greater rights into the building. And also allows us to keep the original portion of the building, the floor plates intact without having to.
Are there any questions? Okay, well, let's call it that, Johnny. Missy, did you want to carry your, or did you want to add anything? Thank you. Judy Stanton?
Judy Stanton for the Brooklyn Rights Association. We do not believe the application is ready to be approved at this time. First, we are concerned that the proposal will diminish the historic character of the existing pre-designation extension. We believe the new window openings will involve substantial loss of historic fabric. Enlarging the opening in narrow extension for a new double-height window, including a necessary framing to support it, will necessarily result in removal of most of the existing brickwork there.
Brickwork there.
Also, the increased ratio of blast solid on the extension tends to erase its historical subordination to the building. Defining the work of the extension could result in a more historically appropriate proposal. Second, we believe the application overall is incomplete in terms of the level of detail presented on the due proportions and other proposed changes. We believe that if the proposals require the commission's rules to go more over public opinion, then its details should be sufficiently worked out for the public as a commissioner to know exactly what the finished product will comply.
Thank you. Jesse Denon?
Jesse Denon, Historic District Council. Historic District Council finds that, given those working, the only partially visible public damages, the two-story window in the alley area is substantial intervention in this courtyard largely connected to century houses. The window, in conjunction with the back door, the cost is an egregious overreach. It should be reset and replaced.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? Okay, we have a resolution from Brooklyn Community Board Two recommending approval of the application. Would you like to respond?
Thank you very much. I'm Mary DeRix, Preservation Consultant for this project. I just want to say that the addition is early nineteenth century, and I think that this is a second addition and that's definitely a third addition based on brickwork and changes in height on the inside. So it's, it's an altered twentieth-century addition. And the only other thing I want to say is that much, much last year, rears have been approved just frequently at the commission. Thank you.
Can you maybe just leave us with a photo showing the context of this from the block?
Of the rear yard or more of this?
Yeah, not an entire block. Maybe go back to the elevation.
So are there another questions? Would you like to motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All favor?
All right.
So there's a lot of work happening on this rear facade, but our comments are really limited to those two openings on this L, which has been represented in this early twentieth-century L that's been altered over time. And we have, you know, approved double-height openings on rear facades. We typically do require a spaniel to reflect the floor slide and give it some scale, which is something that's now been incorporated into our rules. This one is a little unusual because it's just on the L, that's not the full width of the building. So that may be a way to think about it. So would you like to start?
I'd like.
No, I mean, I think that the elevation rendering makes it more, it appears that there's more, more dramatic change than I think there actually is. If you look at what we've made, which you saw a moment ago, what's being removed, I understand that some of this stuff, I don't think it's dramatic change. I mean, things are before, so it's entirely clear.
Everybody agree? Okay, so would I like to motion to approve?
And in the matter of document number LPC 19-34587, 178 Hick Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. The application is to alter window openings of the rear facade. I know that the building's style, scale, and materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. I recommend approval, noting that the work around damage eliminated a significant historic fabric. That proposed window and door enlargements will not be visible from any color that will bear. That the combined and enlarged window openings and enlarged door will maintain the scale and character of the rear L and rear facade of this row house. That the multi-light window configuration will harmonize with the other windows of the rear facade and L. And that the work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building for Brooklyn Heights Historic District.
All favor? Any opposed?
Okay, that's a great, thank you.
Okay, the next item is number four. It's LPC 19-27278. Application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. Block 172 lot 7503, 77 White Street, Tribecaque East Historic District. The upper ex-style store and wall building designed by August Labor and both in eighteen eighty-eight. The application is to replace the loading block.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm Zaydak, Preservation Staff. The item before you is for seventy-seven White Street, which is located at the southeast corner of White Street and Portland Alley in the Tribecaque East Historic District. The proposal is to remove the concealed cast iron vault light panels and replace the diamond plate platform, the new diamond plate platform at the White Street entrance, which you can see here in the designation photographs. Here's some existing condition photographs. The proposal is before you today because it includes removing the vault light panels and storing the salvageable ones on site. And for a staff level approval, the panels remain to be reset and deteriorated once replaced in kind. The applicant is here to share the details of the proposal and answer your questions.
This is the plan that shows where the area in red where the vault lights are in the street, and it's currently covered by a pad of white. This is a complete, oh, I'm sorry, my name is Louise O'Neil, I'm here with us. The vaults still remain severely deteriorated, I can see in the photos. We use our traffic light system with green, yellow, and red for the different areas where the vault lights are and what the condition is. You can see in certain areas that they're severely deteriorated, and this area we might be able to salvage, and this yellow area will have to wait and check the condition whenever the removal begins. In the areas of this deterioration, you can see that the iron is very brittle and it has significant deterioration of fractures, which are beyond repair. Here's more areas where there's severe deterioration, and the areas that are yellow, we'll need to check and have a removal. Just close-ups of the deterioration. These are the areas that we'll need to look at first and further investigations. And these, we think, we'll be able to remove and store on site. And this is the pole sidewalk plant, and this is the elevation part. And for the fact that we locate existing conditions in other buildings in the area, and there's a lot of diamond plate in that area. Are there any questions?
Krista Belgoff?
Krista Belgoff of the Society for the Architectural Society. We are very pleased to see that this item is before you today. It deserves your consideration. New York is a changing city, and sometimes government policy needs to adapt, reflect change. This commission designated Soho in nineteen seventy-three, but it was a largely abandoned section of the city. And rightly developed some specific compromises to enable inexpensive renovations that people then could perform, such as the use of diamond plate to cover damaged platforms and vault lights. This reasonable policy has lived on and spread to other downtown districts. But now, these districts have become enormously fashionable and real estate values have soared. Given the transformed financial climate, it is now possible to consider more extensive restoration through streetscape without creating hardship. Some properties have already restored vault lights, incorporated vault lights into entrance steps, and illuminated them brightly from within at twilight, a wonderful effect at Christmas time. A serious consideration of reuse or replacement should always be part of the process now. The usual photographs showing the rusted results of reflected nameplates should no longer necessarily justify destruction. Thank you.
Jesse Denon?
Jesse Denon for the Historic District Council. The HCC asked the commission to ask the applicants to go a step further and restore the vault lights as well. Vault lights are defined feature of the former manufacturing districts of Tribecaque and Soho, and serve as an important reminder of the industrial past of these upstairs residential and shopping areas. Vault lights should not be lightly discarded. An opportunity to restore them at the site should be seized. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? Okay, we do have a resolution from Brooklyn Community Board One approving the proposed vault light removal, reinstillation of as many as possible, and safe onsite dry storage of the salvaged vault light parts. Would you like to respond to the comments? Maybe talk specifically about the type of deterioration and how repair is feasible?
So just going back to the areas where there's a deterioration. As the iron is such a brittle material, there's been a lot of failure in the areas where we think that it might be salvageable. We're not entirely sure until we do further investigation. It's been difficult to investigate because it's already covered with mesh and concrete. So we can only see from one damage point. We would like to restore, or we would like to see it as much as possible, but at this point, because we haven't started removal of the other structural items, we can't say that it's all in good condition or it's all in bad condition. So we've only got a preliminary investigation to this point.
And the pieces that you think may be more salvageable, are those also covered with concrete? Does it?
Yes, they are.
Any other questions, John?
Does the staff agree with the conclusions drawn about the quality of these, the condition of vault lights?
I think as the applicant has stated, this is one of those things where it's, it's very difficult to assess the condition of these features just from the underside. That gives you clues, of course, and you can see that there are fractured sections, missing sections, heavily rusted sections, and that's just the underside of it. Perhaps more damage is even concealed from above, where the concrete in particular is interacting with it, not just that it got covered with diamond plate sometimes. This has that extralater in there that traps water and causes stress problems. So it really is one of those things where it's, it's going to be probably impossible to make the assessment, does it have to go? Or can it stay until some of these other materials are peeled off and it can be closely inspected?
How closely do we guide and monitor the process of doing that assessment? I ask that because on several occasions in my tenure, we end up, the next thing we see is the applicant come in with a big hole in the ground, you know, because the whole thing collapsed during their inspection.
I mean, it's something we work into our permits, a stipulation, just like we review material samples for magic pointing wood or brickwork. We, you know, we do have the ability to be even more specific and require multiple steps in the process, and perhaps this is the right type of application to do that for. It is true that sometimes the applicants may proceed with work anyway or skip a step, but we, we do work those into our permits that require stipulations to, you know, once the work occurs. And there is that pause for staff to look at them and look at the conclusions that are reached at that time by the applicant. And if we still disagree, then that's another matter that you either bring back to you, or perhaps we require them to work this way.
And we've seen proposals that include new vault lights, but replace it to a place.
We have, many of them have been special permits where there's a higher level of preservation or restoration that is required because of the special permit they're seeking. I think in the Jeb Foundation, for one, it's not a special permit, and they collectively voluntarily restored the vault lights. But Corey can speak to the challenges we've heard from applicants about restoring and replacing materials.
Well, I, and I would also just, also point out, there's, there are projects where the vault lights are exposed and have been since designation, well, not long before that. And there are projects where they've been covered since designation or sometime before that. And I, I think it is fair to say that more often when it's a case that, you know, these vault lights were not exposed at the time of designation, haven't been for a very long time, and they're heavily deteriorated. The commissioners have been more accepting of a replacement that does not necessarily include bringing some radio back, such as this one, where they're still structurally intact. I think it's fair to say when they're exposed, that's when the commissioners have sort of the most insistent that they need to be restored or replaced. Kind of to maintain sort of a known visible condition that's been there for a long time. Now, it's not the same as always the case for, for different projects, but I think there is sort of a pattern to that.
Which, which goes to the point here, Krista, that you brought up about, because the, sort of the timeline and the relationship between the economic moment and the designation of the district. And once it's caught up, what, does, does that change our approach to, you know, sort of what we require?
Well, I mean, I think these are tricky conversations to have because we don't typically consider finances. But the reality is, is that the cost of this is very, very, very high. Historically, the commission, I think, has been a
Historically, the commission, I think, has been a little bit more willing to approve some loss where it's not salvageable, especially if it hasn't been seen for years, in the hopes that the money can then be put toward the facade so they sort of prioritize maybe one over the other. It's no doubt these are significant features and definitely property owners have struggled with them and, you know, and we've struggled with what's the right and fair thing to do.
And just one last little code about it is that this is a situation, I mean, I think Christabel's sort of interpretation of the commission approval is certainly probably accurate, but it's also the case that diamond plate historically, it's not just that the commission came upon this as a, as a, you know, way to deal with this problem, this was in fact something historically had been done and therefore for an appropriate standpoint, it's hard to say it was inappropriate to have diamond plate covered, you know, invisible, that being invisible sort of element. So I think it's, it's, it's a, you know, tricky and complex thing.
Any other questions? So we'll have a motion to close the hearing. All in favor? So I guess, you know, it's sort of a kind of kicked off the discussion here and, you know, there has been a long history of sort of trying to salvage what we can, allowing new diamond plate material, which has also been found to be contributing to sort of represent the area, the zell of the fault lights. And sound replacement, particularly in special permits, as the replacement can be a very exhaustive thing to do. So I guess with that kind of history, challenges, does anyone want to take this one on? Here I would say is that it has been covered, it's covered with concrete and it's been covered since the time of designation. It's also, I think, maybe we can look at the streetscape, unlike perhaps some of the streets in Soho where it's almost continuous along the sidewalk. This is a single installation, so that may be another way to think about this one as well. It's covered since designation, it's now part of a continuous band of fault lights. And, and, you know, it's very, very deteriorated.
What do you think is not part of the continuous band?
Particularly in Soho, you've sort of had this whole shop for this line in front of the building along it, you know, a full sidewalk and then it was took historically with the brand as, as, as beyond it. So here you just have, now, it could be it's beneath the concrete on the adjacent building, but that's not visible, no choice today.
This is very, it's really funny and I think even your point, Mark, was an important one, that in fact replacement material had been used historically as well, but that's a really important point. And I think we could find it in a sense to, to allow for it to continue to be documented. But I was in Soho on Saturday, I saw many other people this weekend and you could not move, I mean, it was absolutely packed with humans, it's a different time. And I just, it just seems that, that we could require in this case that there be new fault lights. I think that that's where I can, but I understand both sides.
I agree with you. I think especially considering the building of the condominium, I imagine it's expensive to replace fault lights, but it's possible to do it by, it seems like it's a bit more appropriate than simply keeping the replacement diamond plate on the ground.
Well, it's not, it's hard, I thought of the cost as well, it's hard to deal with it because it's sort of the market we have dealt with in the past. Others? Yes, Kim?
What has it looked like? A lot of jobs like this where they formerly had the glass and they had little lights and those sort of line, but usually they always came back into the diamond plate because the lights were break and it's leaking and all the problems of disclaimance help them and people, it's breaking them all the time. So I think that would be important of staying used diamond plate unless they would, unless the owners really wanted to keep the glass because it becomes a substantial problem.
And I think in the, in the last two years, we were going through the full process, we did have a lot of experts come in and talk to us about their experience with these fault light covers and even I think we found their experience was that even brand new fault light covers have the same leaking issues as the interaction between the paving and the fault light and that it's, so, so then going back to spending, you know, half a million dollars and then having it leak again very soon, I think there are reasons that property owners would love to go there, but, I mean, I think in this space, again, for the reasons I said, because it's an individual building and it's not part of a continuous band of the diamond plate, it hasn't been seen since designation, I can support it, just again, trying to be fair and thinking about how we've approached it elsewhere and allow them to salvage what they can, but I do think this is something we have to tackle on larger scale. I can't watch if they're far.
I also think that where they're for feasible, we should, they should be salvaged as we normally ask them.
On the matter of strictly appropriateness for Manhattan, LPC 1927-27977, Light Street of Hookah East Historic District. The Neo Brex style restoring and old building design by August Hummer and built in 1888, application is to replace this loaded platform. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, design, and details are among the features that subject the special architectural and historic character of the Trigag East Historic District. I recommend approval finding that the removal of the remaining cast iron fault light panels may be warranted by the deteriorated and unsound condition, that the work will not result in perceptible change in the streetscape as the fault light panels are concealed from fuel and documented at the time of designation of the historic district, that the insulation in new steel platform and stairs will be called the presence of the historic cast iron fault light platform and stairs and will maintain the industrial character of the insulation by using steel beams like plating that's found throughout this historic district and that the reconstruction of platform will eliminate water infiltration and support the long-term preservation of the building. However, I recommend that since the level and extent of deterioration of all the panels have not been fully documented and that some of the panels, especially the vertical stairwinds are maybe salvageable, that if feasible salvageable panels be integrated into the design of the new platform and stairs in order, excuse me, that the, if feasible, panels, like panels be salvaged where possible.
Yeah, a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Three opposed. Okay, so it's approved with those one.
Right, moving on to item number five, this is LPC 19-31159, an application for a certificate of appropriateness of Manhattan, block 1718, block 18, 53 West 119th Street, the Mount Morris Park Historic District. Neo Brex Roadhouse designed by J.P. Terracchino and built in 1955, applications to construct rear yard roof operations, modify the serial openings, saw rooms, and excavate the rear yards.
The board officials, the community administration staff, this item is 53 West 119th Street, located on the north side of West 119th Street between Leonard Avenue to the west and Fifth Avenue to the east, in the Mount Morris Park Historic District. Here you can see photographs of the property from the 1940s, 1980s, and current. The next couple slides provide images of the subject building in the context of the row and within the block. Here you can see an axon section of the existing conditions of the subject property. This application consists of several components including rooftop and rear yard additions and excavation of rear yard. Here are the single proposed elevations of West 119th Street facade showing our proposed rooftop addition will be 10 feet six inches and will feature GFRC and stucco plating and metal door assemblies. Please note that restoration and winter equipment ordered upon will be brief at staff level. This section shows an overlay of the existing building and the proposed additions. The next two slides show set next study with visibility of the rooftop additions. And here we see the mockup of the proposed rooftop addition at the roof. The photographs here taken from West 119th Street show that the rooftop addition is not visible from a public view. And here we see the same condition photographs of the rear facade with a walkway hidden and existing rear yard additions shown here. The following two slides show the same conditions at neighboring buildings within the block. Here are existing proposed elevations of the rear facade showing that the proposed fault light rear yard addition will feature GFRC and stucco plating and metal door assemblies. And a section of the proposed GFRC frame shown here. The last one of the proposal is for work at the areaway. The photographs shown here depict the existing conditions at the areaway and street. These existing or proposed elevations show the proposed work at the areaway, which includes installing metal picket railings and enlarging the understube opening vertically. Here you can see existing stoop and areaway conditions at neighboring buildings that are running through the same conditions. And the rendering here shows proposed alterations. The applicants are here to answer any questions.
Jesse Denno? Jesse Denno?
Jesse Denno for the Torque District Council. The Torque District Council strongly objects to this massive full width rear yard addition to the garden floor. This house is in the middle of a row of 11 houses that share an unbroken row of rear facades. This intervention is frankly a blockbuster. Furthermore, HGC is concerned with the inappropriate removal of the entire rear facade of this historic building and the replacement of a substantial brick wall with his multi-FRC brick wall. The base of this district's roadhouses is a defining feature of Mount Morris Park. The GFRC is not an appropriate type of material. This would be the highest variation on this block and should be reduced to permanent line in LPC approved conditions and to present the legibility of the buildings in regional envelope and to the public's mind. Thanks.
Thank you. Is anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? Okay, we have a letter from the Community Board Ten noting that the Transportation, Storage, Preservation, and Landmarks Committee saw this twice, found no issues with scope of work, but when presented to the General Board, meaning the board voted 14 in favor, 14 in opposition, and two extensions, and so there is no formal recommendation therefore submitted to us on this application. So can you come up and perhaps, sorry, speak to the contexts when you testified that a lack of other additions within this block and how this would interact or relate to or not relate to the other buildings?
This is the neighborhood of our block and you can see the vertical extension of my five houses on the right. There is the rooftop addition and also the two blocks on the left. Two buildings on the left has enlarged stairwell that with the full style. Our vertical extension is actually 23 feet three inches from the front side, so it's not visible on the street. And the reality is that like it's only 13 feet three, it's a, it's a full width of it's a missing building, it's not that healthy and three story car extension is just extremely from the original surface to the, to the new and, but you can see a complex has, the rear, the materials are stuccoed in a painted race and also etched brick. And the GFRC is, it's more as a controlled texture, it's not like underlaid the surface. And we are actually matching the color with the current stucco color of our existing rear facade. And the zell line will be also even more textured, just like the brick. The windows are not as functional, it's more functional and the zell line is probably a little overbladed, so we'll, this is definitely new, but it's a bit more textured.
Any questions? All right, so we'll have a motion to close the hearing. All in favor? So if we're going to have our discussion, we can have a seat. So this is a block, the block side of the street is pretty pristine in terms of rear yard additions that are none within this row, although there are some further down, they are lower, two and three stories and lots across the, across the yard is on the opposite street are also at two and three stories. So you would like to start on this one?
I think that the rear yard addition is inappropriate. I think that the rest of the data, you told the work that you see. I think you had to keep, I think the full height, full width rear yard addition is inappropriate and should be no higher than, than three stories if it's going to be full width. And I think that the rooftop addition, because there are other rooftop additions, is acceptable, but the height should be reduced as much as possible because the parables may not be necessary. I think work is done reducing the height, but I can tell us about this one. And the use of GFRC as a rear side is a bit grandiose, although within the scope of things that we approve and rear yard additions, as long as what remains of the existing building on other floors, it is, remains the break.
All right. What do you think? John?
I think in a great, clearly, my thought gets a little bit of an unusual application because the rooftop addition is actually relatively modest, visible, etc., so right within what is expected. I do feel that probably the parables are unnecessary. But then on the rear addition, and it's almost as if they decided, well, shoot the moon on that one and go for the maximum. And so I do agree with my thought, I've got to cut down, I'm okay with the materials on it. And then I think the rail is also before us, right, on the front?
Yes, thank you.
And that one, I would just suggest that they work with staff to inform the design and not something a little bit more period-to-period appropriate.
And there's also the removal of the gate while the gate at the entry under the stoop is not historic. Historically, it would have had a gate, so I think the presence of the Latin word "gate" is before us as well.
Square top, right? Yes, we'll say. Yeah, that's an interesting change as well, because a lot of people try to put the light having the gate there.
Okay, so I think we think it should have a gate and maintain its arch. Any other thoughts? Okay, so I think, you know, after the staff talk to you about additions, arch or rear additions, you know, we really look at the context and understand what the median neighbors are in the larger context in trying to determine the right size addition. So this addition, I think, is a full width addition needs to be reduced by a couple of stories. And then once you do that, the use of interior may be okay. Rear combination seems to be fine, I think the staff can work with you on that. So Justin is on the front side, we'll have you come back.
Okay, we're going to move to the public meeting items for today. There are two of those. First is item number one, LPC 19-15901. An application for certificate of appropriateness of Little Manhattan, Block 5, Lot 18, King Street, between Charles and King, Historic District. Federal-style roadhouse designed by William Kriski in 1826. The application is to construct a rear addition, modify the roof and rear door, excavate the rear door and chimney. This was last presented in the public hearing on the 13th, 2019. No action is taken at this time.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Richard, Community Board and Staff. The addresses, 7th and 8th Street located on the north side. King Street between Barrack and Sixth Avenue and Charles and King, Historic District. Here you can see the back photos of the front and the rear facades. And the block plan with the donuts and the existing one-story rear addition. A proposal to track that back towards the building with full width. Originally, we have the original proposal, the original building, first proposal, and the public proposal. Originally presented in the Commission at Public Hearing on the 13th. Proposal is to enlarge an existing non-four storey single-story addition and the deteriorated rear brick masonry facade and construct a new two-story brick masonry rear addition with a roof deck and rear metal stairs. In conjunction with excavating the rear yard to enlarge basement floor to the rear door platform. Additionally, the proposal seeks to modify roof and rear dormer, centering the dormer maintaining a roof line and removing a plain facial chimney. This gives you the existing photograph of the rear facade and the first proposal, two-story rear addition. And the current officials expressed concern about the visibility and scale of the rear addition and wanted to be sure that the federal style of the house would maintain. To use the new Sixth Avenue of the existing and the first proposal. One thing that I think was pointed out at the public hearing is that the current rear addition is visible with the rear wall. It starts about here, unfortunately, the neighbors on their rear addition where the garage is have plant pots. So we've taken them out of the rendering so that we can show the rear addition more fully. It does start up there and then slowly tapers out, but again with the proposal, we're proposing to pull that back in slightly. So the applicants have revised proposal, reducing the height of the addition to one story. And that closely approximates the height of the existing rear addition and reduces its depth into the rear yard. The existing rear addition is visible from Sixth Avenue, but it's somewhat obscured by the name of the property. And these have been removed around to show the rear addition. The deteriorated rear facade will be rebuilt, but we are proposing to maintain the original openings of the windows and replace the single lights of the previous proposal to the multi-lights. And the dormer openings to match the historic decoration. Also, the brick masonry chimney is being maintained. And the proposed rear dormer has also been amended from a gable to a shed roof. And the architect, Annie Lowe, of Court Architecture is here to answer any questions.
So I think, yeah, if you leave us with the view of that, it would be very good, sure. So I'm not sure if we have any questions. We had...
Can I talk about that grill above the windows?
The louver? It's just a niche kind of louver.
Is that setback from the roadblock?
Currently, the proposal is... It's flush.
Okay, are there any other questions? We'll either Richard or is there any reason to set up for the applicants? So just to end up with the record, we did get a letter from Village Preservation. They say that they appreciate the efforts that have been made and feel that further modifications should be required. And specifically that no addition should be visible from a public viewing. That opens the round head that would be eliminated. So the last time we saw this, I think the commission talked about how this was such a unique opportunity to be able to experience these federal buildings from three sides, really. Because it was the second building in, because of its federal style, there were great concerns about the scale and the visibility of the addition. And so the applicants have refused that they have an existing one-story addition that is useful behind those plant doors. Consider proposing another one-story addition pulled down less deep in the rear yard than existing one-story addition. And in addition, they allow the conditions in the warrants reconstruction, of course, that are otherwise maintained in federal window and transportation patterned materials. And I think they also simplified the dormer to make it less... Previously, they were matching the neighbor's dormer to non-story. But I do think it's, I'm glad you asked a question about replacement and whether it's flush or not. So I think about the details as we discuss this application. So who would like to start with this meeting?
I guess my day. Well, let's start. They did a great job adjusting the visibility and they took a serious hit in cutting out that floor on that extension. And I very much appreciate that. I mean, the amount of visibility that's left, completely fine. On that dormer, I would, I think it needs to distinguish itself from the rear facade of the building somehow. And that might be a very small setback, but it should be some sort of intervention to it. And I don't know whether the louver is in that place because it really needs to be, but if there's some other way to hide the louver, that'd be great. I mean, if it needs to be there, it needs to be there, but otherwise, I'm fine.
Are you really great? Great, so I think we have a motion.
In matter of LPC 19-15901, 17 King Street, between Charles and King, Van Damme Historic District. A federal-style roadhouse designed by William Kriski. Built in 1826, the application is to construct a rear addition, modify the roof and rear dormer, excavate the rear yard and remove chimney. I know the building styles, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Charles and King Van Damme Historic District. And I recommend to all, I think the proposed work of the rear of the building will only be visible from limited vantage points on Sixth Avenue against a background taller secondary facade of neighboring buildings. That the existing dormer and roof plating are modern, therefore its placement will not eliminate any significant architectural features. That the existing rear facade of the house is in a very deteriorated condition and will be reconstructed to match the historic condition. That the proposed multi-light windows of the rear facade will be consistent with the historic transpiration patterns of federal-style roadhouses. That the replacement of the existing modern rear addition with a new one-story addition which will not extend as deep as the rear yard will maintain a similar level of openness in the rear yard and its surroundings. The proposed rear yard addition will only be minimally visible from a public thoroughfare and will closely approximate the height of the existing addition, which is replacements and will therefore not detract from views of the rear of the building. That the proposed addition and railing will be simply designed in future materials and finishes which will help them blend with the surrounding context. That the lowered grade level of the rear yard adjacent to the addition will be keeping the air and light wells sometimes found in 19th century roadhouses and will not significantly alter the perceived scale of the house. That although the lower grade excavation will extend to the rear platform, the work will be in a small section of green space separated from the center of the block by neighboring buildings and will butt walls of neighboring buildings. And that the excavation will be done with compliance with the Department of Building Design Regulations and Supervision of a licensed professional engineer, a registered architect, technical buildings, facades and adjacent buildings. However, I find that the dormer placement flush with the rear facade as well as the airtightly placed louver will not be typical of historic dormers or lay well to design the house, therefore, I recommend that the dormer be set back slightly from the rear facade and that the louver be omitted or more discreetly integrated below the eaves or at the sides.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments?
Right, the next public meeting item is number two, LPC 19-3 for Lot 401. An application for certificate of appropriateness of Little Manhattan, Block 5, Lot 18, 17 King Street, between Charles and King, Historic District. Twenty over Bible style institutional building designed by Alashine James in August W. Courts in 1813. Application is to amend certificate of appropriateness 1826 to modify the previously approved unitization into a spell-same.
Would we need a preservative staff? Love and Bond Street located at the north extreme corner of Bond Street and Lafayette Street in the No Home Historic District. This application is to amend certificate of appropriateness of the addition in 2016 approving the expansion of the historic penthouse. The construction of a new stair bulkhead and elevator machine room at the roof of the penthouse. The installation of non-illuminated pinmounted signage on the northern facade. The installation of new windows throughout and alterations to the base including the alteration of main street openings and the installation of a new storefront plaza. The application came back to the commission in 2018, at which time it amended the petition to reduce the size of the penthouse enlargement and to eliminate the construction of the stair bulkhead and elevator machine room at the rooftop of the existing penthouse. The application before you today is to enlarge the existing penthouse to match the footprint of an earlier penthouse which was removed during construction. And to install new pinmounted signage at Lafayette Street facade. The penthouse extension will be slatted brick and the proposed pinmounted signage will be LED, fractal, and parrot slatter. Five feet earthwood from our arctic group for the...
Alright, thank you. So we need a motion to open the proceedings? All in favor? Can you just walk us through, I think we had a lot of description about what was previously approved. I think we need to just visually see what we approved, what was previously approved as an amendment and then do a...
So today, I'm here presenting rear architects with my colleague Milan and Luis and the owner Amir for Love Bond Street, roof combination and stair salvage application. So as you know, Love Bond Street is located in Bond Street and Lot 13. So previously, this building was actually in front of you and pursuing the full extension of the penthouse level. So I'll try to take you through the next slide to show you how it looked like before. So this was the approved application, an addition for the rooftop. And then, so the ownership came back and filed a to keep a distinct condition as you can see on that portion of the building. So this is the same condition. The proposed condition would be, I think, a rooftop addition that was actually existed previously on the rooftop. And simply keeping what it was, but it was demolished during the process of construction with the intention of keeping only this portion that existed. And then, but with the need of an extra space for operational purposes, we had the owner add the additional piece and keeping the same existing footprint of what it was there previously. So as you can see, this was approved by landmark full story. And then the PAA portion came after that and this was the only portion that it was built. And this is the proposed addition and this was before Landmarks Historic District.
Okay, so at the time of designation, there was a partial top floor and a stair bulkhead, a mechanical bulkhead. And so then we approved a full rooftop addition. And a proposal is now to return it back to its condition at the time of designation, which is a partial extension of the bulkhead.
So for the purpose of this presentation, we built a markup ambush, taking through what was approved by landmark and what's existing and what's proposed. So these are the visibility map from three angles. So this is for Lafayette Street. So the addition will be definitely visible, so you will be seeing it. But we just wanted to ensure that the addition goes along with the building without losing any key features of the building and covering to the whole design of the apartment. So as you can see, the orange marking, that's our markup. And that's the same condition and this what you'll be seeing after the construction. It's the only thing you'll be seeing is a copper cornice video which existed on the other side of the building on Lafayette Street. So we wanted to keep the same corners that we marked throughout the penthouse level. And at the other angle is number two, and this is from Bond Street. And again, the addition is visible, but we hope to design something that doesn't take away from the building's overall look.
Commissioners, if it's not clear, it's a big blue part of the house.
The orange one is the orange one here. We will be here. So the addition is the orange one obviously, this what we will be seeing. And it keeps the same penthouse level, the copper will be wrapping around the whole penthouse level. So the addition is about 10 feet 5 inches high. And so can I take you to some picture? I'm sorry. So this is the number of LPC for building sections. And this is the current section and this is the proposed. Side number one, again, this was approved by landmark. And this is the current condition and this is the addition.
On the Bond Street side, how far is it setback from the parallel side street?
It's 19 feet 7... Approximately 29 feet 7 inches. It's not visible directly from Bond Street, which will go further to the Juan Plata, then it starts here.
So that was signage, the addition would not eliminate signage.
That is on Bond Street. So the signage here was approved by landmark previously. And then the second signage that we're proposing to be on Lafayette Street between first floor and second floor. first floor and second floor. Where it was originally there in the past, because this was an animal hospital and a horse stable, after that it was converted to Roman Shepherd. And the sign was there and then we're putting back where it was before, but you know, today's difference in use of signage is different. It'd be somewhat similar to what was there.
Schofield is the name of the store.
So this was a animal hospital, Roman Shepherd, and that's the most interesting store in the world, so it's ours. It's our, it's our, it's retail, only in the retailers. It came out, I recommend you visit it, it's beautiful. A series of retailers, small booths, and interesting retailers.
And so you're proposing that all three of the facade signs have a backlit?
Yes, it's, I mentioned the signage. So this is, so we're keeping, obviously, the existing brick. So we just recently restored some of the bricks in the penthouse though, so we're keeping the same brick and then we're keeping the same copper canopy. And that's what the elevation looks like on the top level. And this is small, supermigrating on how that looks like. And the signage is, the signage that we're proposing is on Lafayette Street side of the building. We're proposing two backlit signage, it's brass metal finished and it's backed in. So, and it's pinmounted on the building's facade. And the other signage there was, this was the original entrance by the door. It was a carved stone signage and currently we have, what we have is a metal plating on top, so the signage should be untroubled in case this tenant moves out there, so it can be opened in time soon. And then after that, we're putting the same signage in similar fashion, pinmounted on the metal plating. And then, and we're proposing a two flagpole light fixture to light up the flats.
Ken?
The addition on the top, the brick doesn't seem that, that's not the whole little purpose of the building.
Um, it's going to match what's there. Yes, it's going to match what's there, but because of the light, you won't, I mean, there's a brick there, but you won't see it because of the shadow of that, but it's definitely going to match the dislocation.
It's the rendering.
It's the rendering. The time of the photo was taken, so the shadows are quite strong.
And the signage, do you really need four times? And on that one facade, if you need two?
So need one and two and one over the door. I mean, going back to the history, you see there are two signage there.
Didn't they say, weren't they kind of two parts of the same sign? In other words, it was New York something, Cleveland?
So the...
Like there's one phrase that was appropriate for two parts on the wall?
Could be, but I don't know how to divide show fields. English. Show and fields. So, but, but length of the signage is not quite as long as that, so it's similar, I mean, it's smaller than what was there.
Any other questions?
I have, this is the question I have. I mean, I was in the neighborhood a lot and I don't really see backlit signage. Is there a problem with that?
Good question. Probably fair to say we haven't seen as much in this district as we have in others. But I think the fact this is at the higher on the facade is the more relevant question and are there other locations where we have the backlit signage? The rules that we operate under today would allow many storefronts to, you know, be able to get handle that signage, but not at this level. This is not a storefront at this part of the building, so this is a different, a different mentality. So that's the bigger difference.
Everybody have the information they need? Okay, so well, let's start our discussion, you can have a seat. Well, I think the rooftop addition seems fine, going back to previous condition and matching materials quite detailed. We'll only then maybe just go through the balance. A bunch of people think about the, it's not about the presence of signage at second floors, that's based on historic photo, but we need to be storming and then the question of it being backlit.
I don't have a problem with the presence. I would prefer that it not be backlit, so that we don't start the signage creep, I mean, backlit, signage creep off this neighborhood that we may have in some of the others.
It would be unusual in this district to have backlit signage on a facade, storefronts and stuff, just another area. So do you agree?
Well, I actually agree with the, this placement of the sign, but I agree that shouldn't be backlit. I'm more concerned about the sign entry and how they treat that, because it's not really detailed, how they would catch the drawl of this, and that could be the staff one.
We can work that out, staff one. I think the intent is to get also it to reversible, it's access signage, but we'll make sure that the staff works with them on those details. Everybody agree on that? Okay, so it's your turn.
I just, I just want to say that the building just north, the southern building north of this one is, has a, the ground floor is tall and the, and all of the floors above are very bright. I mean, it's actually, when you're asking about backlit, that whole building is super bright all the time, but especially the ground floor of it these days. And this, I mean, here, the ground floor is very short, so I can sort of understand the need to light it up. And I'm assuming the second floor windows will be lit as well, but I can't, I can't tell. But anyway, it's a, in terms of its actual physical elevation, maybe the same height as the building in historic. I know that doesn't count as ground floor, but I think it's an issue.
I think that they are getting the light fixtures to lay the flagpole, which the banners, like, play out. Do others have any other thoughts about the lighting at the upper floors before we finish?
In my LPC 19 batch 34410, 11 Bond Street, AKA 348 through 354 Lafayette Street in the Noham Historic District. A twenty over Bible style institutional building designed by Alicia H. James and August Nadia Cortez and built in 1913. Application is to amend certificate, certificate of appropriateness 18-264 to modify the previously approved penthouse addition and to install signage. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Noham Historic District. I recommend approval of modifications, finding that the proposed rooftop addition will be set back on the paravents and is smaller than what was previously approved by the commission. That the addition will be minimally visible from the north and while more than minimally visible from the west, it will be seen against the backdrop of crowded buildings and will be clad with brick causing it to blend with the brick sidewall of the building against which it will be seen. That the addition will not alter the size and massing of the building, nor will detract from the original architectural design. That the proposed pinmounted signage on the Lafayette Street facade will recall the original institutional signage shown in historic photos. And that the proposed work is supported by the continued adaptive reuse of the building and will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the Noham Historic District. However, I find that the presence of elimination of the large pinmounted signs at the upper stories is not consistent with signage typically found in this historic district. It calls undue attention to the installation. Therefore, I recommend that the pinmounted letters not be eliminated and that the application of work with staff to design a non-destructive sign cover at the green entrance.
Any other second? Call of favor? Any approvals? Okay, so it's approved with that on the occasion, those applications.
Okay, commissioners, my, the last order of this is to make a staff presentation concerning the regulation of painted wall signs. Load that up and start listening. Okay, so to get started, recently a few commissioners asked the staff about the way staff regulated painted wall signs. Staff has conducted site visits and reviewed the permit history in support of this response I will give today. The following presentation seeks to explain the process and identify challenges. The focus today is not whether or not painted wall signs are appropriate or where they are located in the historic district of the facade. Instead, staff's going to discuss and make recommendations primarily related to regulating the graphic content of the signs and the size of the signs relatively exposed to the facade of the ones that are installed. As a little bit of background, the commission started reviewing master plans for painted wall signs and delegating review of the signs to the staff about nine years ago. Prior to that, each sign was reviewed individually by the commissioners at a public hearing. It was understood that staff review could happen a little more quickly and in an effort to keep up with the pace of advertising schedules for these regularly changing signs. So master plan criteria were developed to establish basic standards and with regard to graphics, to manage the potential negative effect of photorealistic graphics in particular, for which we didn't have so much experience with at the time, by limiting the coverage percentage of that graphic content. So as you will see in the painted wall sign examples that are selected by the staff, the current criteria, again, based on specific coverage percentages for graphic or photorealistic images on a solid background, can be used in ways that the staff will use not exactly what was intended. Some of the examples may be exactly what you would vision, others may not. For those signs that seem not to comply with criteria, but technically do, we identified that this is usually due either to the overlap in use of the background color within the graphic itself or the fracturing of graphics into many small parts spread across the background or both. So for the staff, the variations prescribed in the current criteria are so complex that it constantly leads to questions of interpretation in order to be faithful to the intent of the master plan. It ends up taking a lot of staff time scrutinizing the more questionable applications. The examples that will show will exemplify our concerns posing questions like, do we count those very faint clouds that are on the blue background, those graphics? And how? Is the plain colored wall behind that person a background? Therefore, not a graphic, but the sidewalk it adjoins is a graphic. You'll see these examples play out. The bottom line is to many, it probably feels like some of these signs are just one big image or a graphic. So staff has concluded that because of the challenges involved in making interpretive decisions on the graphics, but perhaps little impact on resulting signs despite our regulation, that it might be better to remove the graphic coverage percentage requirements entirely from the criteria. This will also benefit the advertisers and owners who value expectancy and predictability. In exchange, the staff recommends reducing the standard minimum size of these signs from 20% of the visible wall area to 15%. The craft of hand painted wall signs will remain and the border to separate the sign from the wall will remain, perhaps with a few modifications. And finally, staff is recommending a requirement for stripping the layers of paint at regular intervals going forward. So I want to wrap up by emphasizing that we're talking about changing the basic criteria that staff uses for guiding applicants and in making recommendations to you all. Obviously, you'll have the ultimate authority on whether in a particular case these criteria should be followed. So while we must strive to be consistent, the commission always has the authority to address the specific situation and the context before it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Edith to run through some slides and do ask if you hold any questions until the end.
Right, so just, Corey made a mistake, just to correct him for the record. It's a, it's 50% is the maximum, it's the maximum as opposed to the minimum that we have there, that we, it's a general rule, okay, I covered the wall, so.
I just to give you a little context for this, this is just an informational presentation today, as you know, you review these, each application on a case-by-case basis, but we have come to a point where there's a certain set of criteria that's presented to you each time, and so we wanted you to understand how that criteria plays out to inform your future decisions. So while I think it's helpful to have a discussion today, we're not voting on anything, we're not adopting anything, this is about informing our reviews of individual applications going forward.
Dr. N, Commissioner Zeev Bellings has one preservation staff. I'm joined today by Karen Abisha and Judge Chakrami, who staff the painted wall sign special desk. Today, we'll be reviewing the criteria for the regulation of painted wall signs installed after a master plan is approved by the commission. We'll be focusing on examples located within the Soho Cast Iron and the Soho Cast Iron Extension Historic Districts. As Corey mentioned, there are 12 master plans in existence currently in these districts which were approved between, at most, 2011 and today. So just to give you an overview of the presentation, we'll be diving a bit into the authorization to proceed or the A T P process. We'll be reviewing the current criteria which regulates sign content, give you some examples, and then conclude with some recommendations of the staff. So just to talk a little bit about the process. So my proposal for painted wall signs presented at a public hearing. The commissioners vote on the appropriateness of the proposed painted wall sign, primarily the location and size, although as mentioned, the pre-existing criteria for regulating the content is also presented at that time, and the commissioners do have an opportunity to comment on that. So for the purpose today, I'm going to focus on the second set of criteria which regulates the actual content of the signs. These criteria for regulation of the sign content were established as a way for staff to review and approve individual painted wall sign installations that occur after the master plan is established. And this is in lieu of presenting each sign individually to the commission as they're installed. Again, as previously mentioned, because these signs remain on the facade for only a few weeks at a time typically, the process does involve very quick turnaround times. But I would like to mention that unlike a windows master plan or similar type of master plan, the painted wall sign master plan does involve a level of interpretation, application of the criteria, both by the applicants and by the staff, so it's not the same thing being installed every time. So I'm just going to go through criteria for the A T Ps. It's separated into two types of sign, there are graphic signs and there are photorealistic signs, starting with graphic signs. Again, some pre-existing criteria. The background is always a solid color, no shading or blending. All area outside of the chosen background color is considered content. Content that's less than five colors, not to exceed 60% of the sign space, this includes text, color more colors, does not exceed 40% of the sign space. And then there's always a border that's used to distinguish a sign from the surrounding facade. Note that there is no specific criteria for the rights to the board, the rights to color a sign. This is just an example of a graphic sign. And then I'll get into, a bit into the photorealistic signs. So to remind commissioners, a photorealistic is, a photorealistic style sign is those that are painted reproductions of an image utilizing shading to achieve a photograph quality. Again, we start with the background, the background is always a solid color, no shading or blending. All area outside of the chosen background color is considered content and it's important to access chosen background color. Content that is black and white cannot exceed 60% of the sign space and with the text. Content that is colored does not exceed 40% of the sign space. And once again, orders identified but not specified in terms of specific criteria. This is an example of a photorealistic sign. So next, I'm going to walk through examples of actual submissions that have been filed by applicants and reviewed by LPC staff. This one is occurring at 140 Grand Street. So when filing for an A T P authorization to proceed, the applicant will typically submit an image of the proposed sign and a calculation of background versus content to show that it is in keeping with the pre-established criteria. This is an example of typical submission. Here we see the image of what the advertisement is going to be. And then below it is an image that's representing the content versus background. So for, again, for color realistic signs, no more than 40%, but the sign can be content. And per the criteria also, all area outside of the chosen background color... And per the criteria also, all area outside of the chosen background color is considered content. So a way to achieve this is that something that's called pixel count is used by the sign companies. And they use that to direct their advertising clients and graphic designers to craft an image that can be reproduced as a painted wall sign that would meet the LPC criteria. So in this example, the chosen background color is this tan color. And as you can see in the lower image, everywhere in the image where that color appears is represented in black and anything that is outside of that color is represented in white. White being content and black being background. So... So I put this up here as an illustration of how background versus content could potentially be open to interpretation and to illustrate some of the challenges involved with making these interpretive decisions at staff level. So this is the sign as it is installed on the facade. And as we go through these examples, I ask the commissioners to also note things like the size of the signs relative to the facades, variations in borders, and also the presence of this item here, which is a sign company identification as a pad. And this has come up as an unanticipated component, which to date has not been discussed as part of the master plan approval, so just bring the master to our attention. Okay, so just some more examples. So in these examples, you can see that the model's pants have been counted as part of the background, background being white, represented here in black. This shows the sign as installed on the facade, and this is facing West Broadway at 60 Grand Street, shown here. This sign represents an instance where 40% wall coverage was approved for this master plan at 120 Prince Street. This black and white photorealistic ad covers 15% of visible wall. At 305 Grand Street, this graphic sign has 10% content coverage, and that would be the black over the yellow background. And at 90 Prince Street, this graphic sign has 39% content coverage and a black border. And then here's the same campaign as installed at 145 Spring Street. I just want to note that the staff to go on site to look at all these 90%. So this slide represents more examples of typical submissions that were reviewed by staff, showing how the applicants illustrate and calculate background versus content again. And you'll see sort of the variety of images and applications that the staff is tasked with reviewing. So here in the stomach example, this is where you see a lot of fracturing of graphics into many small parts that are spread across the background. At Canada, we have what was calculated as background, we see some shading and clouds. And so there's some question as to what is content and what is background. In this example, the wall is considered background, but the sidewalk is not. So it's a bit of a judgment call as to what constitutes background versus content again, a recurring theme today. And then lastly, here, we see that the letters were included as part of the background, although put in sort of this frame to insinuate that it's part of the content. So these examples further illustrate how variations prescribed in the current criteria are very complex and may lead to questions of interpretation and making it challenging for staff to enforce the intent of the master plans. So this is to just kind of talk a little bit about the regulatory impact of the criteria that's specific to the content itself. This is a juxtaposition of a commission-approved sign versus a sign that is on a building not subject to LPC review. This is the same campaign and how they're represented when the criteria is applied. And then in an instance where LPC has no regulatory impact on it. And you see that both are essentially compositions consisting of an image with a scene with skies, the background.
Sorry, the LPC approval is on the left?
Oh, sorry, the one on the left. This is the LPC approval, and this is outside.
Because the sky is treated as background, but it's actually part of the...
Correct, so the sky is treated as background here. So the content coverage was this and the lettering. And then here, there's no regulatory application to this image.
If we're not regulating, is there anyone else who regulates these things?
I think outside of the department of buildings, we regulate the size of regards to facade width. But in terms of content, I don't believe that there's any hand in that outside of our agency. So just going to talk a bit about some of the recommendations that the staff has put together based on their day-to-day experience working on this and other internal discussions. The first is regarding the content. So as illustrated before, there's quite a bit of challenges with interpreting what was the intent of the master plan in regards to regulating the content. So staff is recommending that to omit color criteria and the content versus background coverage criteria for all sign types. Secondly, staff is recommending that criteria be firmly, more firmly established for borders, that they be a black or white border, which was historically the color of the border for historic wall signs, and that was part of the research done by the sign companies at the beginning. To contrast with the background of the sign and the surrounding wall, staff is also recommending that, as mentioned, at least six inches be applied for the border. With regards to the size of the signs themselves, staff is recommending that in exchange for some of the allowable content, that the size of the sign be limited to 15% or less of the visible wall area. And that's the portion of the facade that would be installed on, that's visible from the street. And lastly, with regards to the tag, the tag identifying the sign company is recommended to be placed within the sign itself and not laid outside of the sign. So just quickly, this is the illustration of what a 15% size sign versus a 20% size sign would look like, with the red hatch representing the smaller dimensions. Here at 155 Worcester, and then here at 305 Canal. And then an additional recommendation, a suggestion of the staff, is a maintenance program. And that is to explore establishing a program as part of each master plan which require that some of the layers of paint removed and the airways removed the sides after a certain period of time, and that's maintaining the readability of the substrate. Again, this is from a conservation perspective. So just to summarize, you know, as I hope we're illustrated, there are many complexities surrounding the interpretation and enforcement of the current criteria that regulates the sign content itself. Staff is often challenged with making interpretive decisions, which ultimately may have real impact on the resulting signs. Removing content coverage percentage requirements could improve the ATP process itself, promoting expediency, consistency, and predictability, which is valued by both applicants, owners, and the agency. These changes are designed to benefit staff, applicants, and owners, as I noted. And then lastly, of course, the commission will always retain ultimate authority over which criteria are followed for each master plan.
Thank you, Edith, yes.
Right, so could you go back to those, Edith, the spread of the analysis about... So how would your suggestions change this?
With the removal of criteria regarding the actual content of the sign, the staff would make sure that the border meets the border requirements and that anything that happens within the border would not be subject to the very specific criteria that prioritizes itself to having to make these interpretive decisions.
So you no longer, the applicants would no longer have to say, "X percentage is covered," "X percentage is graphic." So would there be any limitations at all as to the contents within the border?
Not with regards to color or background versus content. However, as Cory mentioned earlier, it would still retain painterly quality, which is one of the things that, you know, the commission found as appropriate based on the historic presence of painted wall signs within these historic districts.
So how do you define painterly when an applicant comes to you and says, "I want to..." How do you define for them painterly?
I think it's more the craft of applying the paint to the surface, the tradition. The discussion of painterly photorealism is something that we had eight or nine years ago when we first started discussing these, and never really meant anything to...
Well, I think that painterly really refers to A, the physical application of paint, and B, the notion of shading as opposed to sort of a graphic quality. So the idea was, we go back, you know, to that yellow, yellow sign, so that's like the classic...
That's very graphic.
Right, so then historically, we're not disallowing a photorealistic in any way. We should ask these companies to put a photograph up there, because these are very good painterly... So I think the best way to think about this, since I think I've been here for the whole gamut of these things, is that it all started with SOLO, with these very large signs. That's where we started putting in percentages, and we were very concerned about this sort of very startling quality photorealist signs at that scale. And so we came up with these criteria to try to help sort of protect against detracting signs of these very large signs. So we said, but then we started dealing with another something, you know, reviewing each one. We settled on these criteria in a way that thought it is allowed the staff to review them. And what's also happened, just to sort of keep in mind, is the size of signs is now limited by zoning to, if less than 6 times the street frontage. So the signs have gotten a little smaller. But there's always this notion of photorealism versus size. And where the staff is coming down on, for many, if not most, of these signs, they're small enough, or if they were made smaller, the potential impact on the district, perhaps, or photo of an unregulated photorealist and it would cover the entire thing, is potentially less. And it would result in less problems with the staff trying to parse any of these issues. So that has come under that...
Yeah, we have, I mean, the commission has a long history of approving painted wall signs that originated because historically, that was the occupants of buildings advertised their presence on the sides of their exposed walls. And we've seen many, many historic examples that show this. And so in over the years, when we had SOLO, originally set up really large signs, I think the commission, you know, the commission-related applications tried to sort of think about it more as text or smaller imagery or more graphic imagery. And then about nine years ago, when we started doing these master plans, there was a very extensive presentation by Colossal that showed historic signs that were more photographic, but still painterly in that paint being applied in a very traditional way. And since then, you know, each application that has come before us has used the same or similar criteria, and the commission has approved them every single time and has, you know, in some cases even embraced this sort of photorealism, despite, you know, some of the staff's concerns about placement or size on some of these buildings. So I think as a commission, we have embraced these signs. But I think, Edith, if you can go to the regulated and unregulated regulations, I think what we're finding is that the amount of effort and time it takes to count the pixels to get this sign to the end, does it make that much of a difference? Does it look any different than the one that is unregulated? But the one thing that could make a difference is its size, its placement to the facade, and its connection with architectural features.
Well, I was, I'm not that long, I just want to ask if you think so to this staff. Have you been finding that the number of graphic signs versus photorealistic is smaller, bigger, same, difference?
We're trying to think about this, if we get both types of signs are...
Are you concerned that if you're going to throw off, and if you feel that our regulations are deterring applicants from doing photorealistic signs?
No, they apply for them, not photorealistic signs.
So by changing the rules, you're not concerned you're going to get more photorealistic signs or that they're going to change in nature?
I guess we could say it might change in nature.
There's always the possibility that there would be some adjustments made by the sign companies. However, we've worked with them for a number of years now. And, you know, their work outside of the districts, I think is very comparable to what they do within the districts. And so I wouldn't anticipate that there would be a tremendous departure. And again, this is probably this example, you know, it's the creative, if you will, is going to be consistent. And for now, it's just a conservative treat for being within the districts, but I don't anticipate a huge departure.
The last question, as you guys are professional preservationists, is it your view that these rules have been successful or not successful in terms of their, just the graphic impact of the signs on the buildings, let's put aside for the moment, this should order in the signs? I say this, I guess what I'm asking is, do you feel that you're failing to achieve your goal and therefore it's enough? Or you don't need to worry about it because it's successful as it is?
I would go for the latter. I think that as successful as it is, I think an important element of this is that one of the selling points of a painted sign versus a vinyl sign or a billboard is that you are experiencing the texture of the brick still. There is an artistic quality to it that I think is, again, reminiscent of the historic signs that were present on these buildings. And, you know, in achieving those goals, I think it's been successful. And I think that some of the frustration to the honest has come from a lot of back and forth with the applicants, a lot of getting very granular about percentages and colors and making decisions about, you know, a blended background versus a solid background that I don't feel will have a negative impact if those are lessened.
Can I ask you a question? We've never talked about this, and they may not know what to do. Is the quality of the paint today different from previous times in that... Is the paint today kind of like game detergent that the scent never goes away? Is it meant to wear much less quickly? Which means that part of the issue is that the kind of the living, contemporary signs are absolutely unrelated to the faded signs. You know, there's the issue of age or wear, never happens. And I don't know how to even make sense of what that means for these signs, but there's almost a disconnect there between what we approve and what we change. And there's that too, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume that, you know, guests are intended to be very vibrant and permanent for the short period of time that they're there. I think we understand that this could be every three to four months, these signs are being swapped out, based on our permit history from some of these applications. So I don't think from the applicant's perspective, they've had any desire for it to wear or show its age at all. It won't be their moment to do that, and they want it to be seen, of course.
I think from an appropriateness standpoint, that that quality is not even part of the appropriateness, it was the historic existence of signs, because they were always going to be changed.
I was thinking about the main impact we're going to see from the proposed rule change, I think, is...
Just to be clear, there is no rule, at least...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
...the criteria that applicants propose to you each time, and will continue to do so.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Anyway, the first thing would be that the size of text might get considerably larger because there would be no, that usually an advertiser would be either trying to convey something in text or they would be trying to, you know, display an object like a co-pilot that's immediately recognized and would have that be larger. To me, that's the two things that would be most likely to alter in traditional advertising. It might or might not have the effect like the Oscar de la Reina sign, you know, it's big enough, and they want to get across the message... and they want to get across the message of the nice look of their parents' bags. So I could see that being a result. I'm not, you know, overly concerned about it. I think the limitation, I think the color limitation, it's better to have, you know, blues. The colors could be whatever the applicant is looking to do because I think that's... And I understand the staff's concern about trying to figure out how much using those particular kind of criteria as ways to figure out content versus... Not what we're really, we really were after to begin with, I think. I think the idea was to have a sign that was not too intrusive. And if you're reducing the size, I think it's already reducing the potential intrusiveness.
Just remind me, the content can be signage or imagery. There is no separate right now, you know, unless they're typically presenting this, divided by text versus imagery.
It's just background versus content and text is considered content.
One way to think about it is text versus imagery. Sorry, Jan, I'm... Okay, so the, when we reduce the percentage of the size of the sign, it would, at some point, I'm assuming, impact the signs that have master plans right now. I guess, and I'm just commenting on this and thinking about it. So they're going to get smaller. So that, and depending upon where they are and the size of the building, could be substantially smaller. So that will impact, I believe, what the advertisers decide to do. Because if your sign isn't that big, you know, putting an image on there, like that Patagonia image or even that Oscar de Lorenzo image, is just going to... It's going to be complic-, it's not going to be easy to have something that's very complicated. And what we may end up getting, and again, no judgment here, is more graphic and more lettering, you know, just graphic. So I think it is going to change what we're going to be seeing. And I'm just, I am actually putting it out there for everyone to think about.
I just wanted to point out that in the examples, we have found that while we have set a maximum percentage of wall coverage, due to zoning and other limitations, the actual size of the sign tends to be smaller. And that even within this smaller size, the advertisers have not, to my knowledge, modified their campaign.
Mark, before you comment on this, this is maybe exactly the...
But in terms of, just I'm trying to get my hands around this process wise. Obviously, it's easy for future applicants who want to set up a master plan, we just apply a different set of concepts to them. For those who are already in, say, year two of a master plan, they're expecting to be following a certain criteria that we approved and agreed upon with them. So when they, one would think that they would have two options when the next one comes up. One is to say, "Okay, we like the idea of what you're, the compromise you're making, changing this decision about content versus background. And we'll take that to production. And so even though we had a master plan, we'll go along with the new concept." Then they might also reject that. They might also say, "Well, we have a master plan, we'll comply with the master plan." Right? Without denying that a master plan we agreed on.
Right, so then their current master plan is for a limited number of years.
Right, so until the end of their current master plan, they can go along merrily with the same process they're using.
What does it all tell?
Well, you're correct. And so it all depends from books. Some, a handful of master plans have been reauthorized for a period of years, three years, five years, in some cases, ten years. And so those master plans are sort of unaffected by the changes that we are proposing, unless they want to come in and, I guess, offer to amend their master plan. I would say that in most cases, it may be that it's useful for the commission to, especially for these very, very large signs, House Street, for example. I wonder whether, in those cases, the reduction of 15% is something that should be seen by the commission before it sort of gives up any regulation for those. So I think that the expectation should be that those with master plans now will just sort of continue to sort of apply them as best they can. I do think that guidance, this is one of the reasons why I wanted to show this to you, guidance for all of you to how we, one would guide the staff in interpreting what we mean by background, may be useful going forward for the existing master plan. Okay? For ones coming up, you'll be able to see it, you'll be able to sort of actually analyze. They'll show you the, sort of, various, you know, ad campaigns you decide whether you like the size with the sort of unregulated content quality. I think this notion of, I think it's very hard for the staff to apply the background versus content. Especially when the, and the sign companies are just trying, they're trying to find something. And so the pixel count is the easiest way for them to do that now. One could conceptually say that is or isn't what was intended by the use of the word background by us. And in fact, I think if you go back a slide, which shows the, that, no, where's the one with the shoe? Just the shoe on the side with the 40% of... Just... So I believe this, when the commission was thinking about photorealism, what is background and the background, this was more what we were thinking, which was this photo, you know, this image on this white background. But of course, that's not what people are putting up there. So I think guidance on how the staff should interpret what is or isn't a background would be helpful for many of these signs that are going to be with us for the next, you know, five or six, seven years would be helpful to them sometimes.
So solid color versus one color versus shades of that color.
No, it's not possible. Because, I mean, you would think that the Patagonia is having a blank example. It's not going to be possible. But the Sonos, so you think, okay, make the background sort of one tonality. But then you see that the Sonos side completely undermines that or because the image is in the major color. So I think it's not something we tend to...
I think it is something we could do, but I think it's something that if we do do it, we should be more clear as to how to apply it. But I think it's a fair question to say whether we should do it. First of all, I gotta say, this conversation is fantastic. Thank you very much to everybody involved, and we should do this on many more issues. But this is great, number one. Number two, I think that this is, seeing this and seeing how the applicants translated the rules into a system and then manipulated that system, was fascinating because it really kind of shows that, you know, this is what happens to the right rules, you know? They get used and you kind of find out where their weaknesses are. And I think that here, can you go back to the one with the Patagonia?
Yeah.
Because that's really interesting. Because here you have what, you know, whether it's painterly or photorealistic or whatever you might call it, there's a basic difference between the left and the right, apart from borders, apart from placement. And that has to do with the degree of quiet space, right? And if, and I think that, and if you look at the rest of the, even the photorealistic ones, there's an increase in the degree of quiet space in the landmark approved ones. I remember that presentation, love, many years ago, when they presented, "Here's why we wanted to master plans." And if I'm not mistaken, the sign that they showed was on Broadway, a movie poster of some kind of monster movie or something with a swirling and muscles and cars and God knows what airplanes jam packed into this super graphic image that was photorealistic and kind of overwhelming in its vivid aggressiveness. And I think that, whatever one may say, with the exception of the Sonos image, most of the images have a kind of quiet space quality that is probably the result of the rules. Because some space, most space, has to, there has to be a certain amount of space that's not devoted to stuff.
What you missed out on with the Sonos?
Well, I think that if we were to want to preserve some control over content such, and if we determined that the control over content that we wanted was an increase in the degree of quiet space, for lack of a better term, then instead of using pixels as the measurement of measuring, you have to basically take a marker, draw it around the outside of the things that are the figure, and then have a figure round analysis, which is really what Wilson is and Dyer is and moving to Canada is. The problem with Sonos is that, you know, by having the micron to be the measuring difference, you know, then the eye of one of those people becomes part of the background. And it really doesn't function that way. Whereas it does, you know, moving to Canada one, even though there's clouds in the back, there's, you know, the quantity of blue quiet space functions to make the image different than what it may have been had they not had those controls and let's say the house got to be 70% bigger, all right? So that's point one. Point two, I think, is kind of what I think was an error, was to not distinguish between text and image. If you look at the historic signs, to my recollection of what I've seen of them, the overwhelming majority were text based. Were text based and were advertisements for tenants in the building. Now, that does not tend to be the way things work. These tend to be advertisements having nothing to do with the occupancy. Right. But, yeah, and those were, you know, those were more specific in specific locations. Right. But I think that to the extent that the rules do govern content, I think there is a place for the rules to say, text should get more laxity in coverage, in quantity, proliferation than imagery, irrespective of, you know, of percentages and stuff like that. I think that an ad that was more text or more graphic, let's say, like the yellow one, you know, that has, I think, has a greater tie to the historic appearance of the district than perhaps a more graphic, you know, a more visual, imagery based one would. So, you know, that's another area where we might do it. The third thing I would say is that I don't think we should be reducing the size of the signs. I think that signs are integral to the history of New York. They were everywhere, they were huge, they were cacophonous. And I think that there's a risk of being overly genteel and kind of preserving an image of the district that is not historic but that may be more aesthetically pleasing to us. But I got to produce for historic reasons, I think we have to look at that. Cacophony is being part of what the district wants.
Yeah, I was going to ask again why the staff felt that was something that they really wanted to propose, because I agree with you. Michael, it's not clear that reducing the size of the sign itself, especially since it hasn't really been approved.
What was the opinion about that? Why?
Again, I think that the staff felt that a loosening of the criteria would be offset by size. Obviously, it's worth discussion.
And I think it would necessarily arise as an issue. It arises that confidence.
Right, so if you go back to some of the images where the sign is very large in the building, not there, that's like, but that's a big sign. There's even some where it's much larger, there we go, the bigger sign. So there are some signs that we approved that are very, very large. And so one has to ask themselves, and the commission is always asked, if that was some super realistic picture of someone's tonsils, you know? Would that be something that was, you know, distracting? Is that something really bright and wild? Would that be distracting? So I think that's, your signs, horses, content, it's always something. There, pardon. That's a big sign and that's a graphic sign. So it's, by those lights, the worst possible case. But I think even here, because they were forced to shrink their box to conform with the rule, or at least that's how they perceived it, they chose not to. And they were really getting away with stuff. They were calling backgrounds the little squiggly lines in the number eight. I mean, it could be a break. But even so, it resulted in a sign that has more quiet space than your nightmare scenario of tonsils. So it's worth considering that, you know, there's, this is not the roiling snake's image that it could have been, right?
Well, because they put their image in a box. So actually, the background is the entire box. So they just said, "Okay, we're going to make this sign smaller, period." And then they did the proportions the way they wanted to be. So they're doing, they're manipulating in whatever way they can to maximize what they can. Can we go back to Patagonia again, please? Because I think this is especially interesting. Yeah. I actually think we should consider relaxing the background then, a little bit. Because, and I recognize that these are, the proportions of these signs are different. So, you know, the sizes are different, so the image is, the image could be a little bigger. But frankly, I'm not so concerned about how active or noisy the one on the right is, but I think it's a more successful. Personally, from a, from a, if I may, because if we weak our criteria but of the sign and for what they're trying to accomplish, I think it's a more successful sign. And you could argue, even though it's not the color, that there is a lot of background in there and that crowns the landscape. So I, I don't know. I have sympathy for this staff, very sympathetic at what they're trying to do. And it seems just too restrictive to me. And I'm not necessarily, it's obvious that it takes way too much of their time. And this is a perfect example of how the, of where an applicant comes to us and they're going back so many times on something, they're like, ugh, they're so overcrowded. It doesn't, I don't know. It's, I think that's, we should reconsider that as well. And I happen to agree, I don't have a problem with the size of the signs. And I think it just may become, yeah.
Let me just comment on the size question. You know, we don't know what the impact of this change is going to be. So forget about size, right? We're imagining in our heads, you know, the difference in what the content is going to be once we release them on the content. All hell can break loose on the content. And the reduction in size, I think, is in some way intended to control that unknown potential crazy impact on the way these signs will look. It's not going to be one of these. They're very, very, very creative people. And they're going to come up with some incredibly shocking things that meet the standard, I promise you. And reducing this size, only trying to reduce the how in our face that craziness is going to be. But we'll see. I mean, if you can do it, you'll, I promise you, we'll be sitting here looking at some things that we will officially approve, that will be pretty outlandish.
Right, and I just, so the next one that comes forward, the commission will have the opportunity, as it will always at the first instance, to say, "Okay, what, how do we want this to be regulated? What are going to be the rules, size, order, all these things?" The staff has come forward with criteria that they think you should follow. And I think we will, you will also be able in most cases to say, "Okay, we're going on a new avenue here, we're not going to do content. So we're going to approve this master plan for three years." There's nothing that, you know, we can look at these as ways to explore and experiment and then reassess. This is sort of what we've done here, you know? The whole purpose of limiting these has been to allow the commissioners to reassess the impacts. Staff has really struggled, in some cases were there, you know, reassessment just in terms of practical, you know, how it's implemented and what it means for... you know, how it's implemented and what it means for staff, applicant relation. These are all things to consider. So you'll have those opportunities to.
Again, these are, these will always come to the commission, and we can look at them on a case-by-case basis. And then we can see how they play out, we can have the first specific, you know, time limits. Adi, you can ask a question.
No, I just wanted to say that I think it is, firstly, it is an interesting conversation, but I feel like we're a bit limited if we really have, wanna have a conversation about kind of the history, the ideas about things like this, invite Steven Doyle, Bruce Mau, or Chuck Close or somebody to really talk about this, if they've been discussed. I think we can put to bed the question of photorealism. It was painted, it is painted, it is painting, and that's been discussed and debated. You know, I do though think that these signs have very little to do with their historic precedent. And as such, and as a result of that, because of that, and because of lots of other reasons, I don't think we should in any way limit or define content. And that includes what we'll call imagery and text. Of course, that, you know, debates about, and kind of conceptual ideas around typography have long since worked through that discussion too. So the staff should, we deal with it and others should.
I think it's, the criteria that we've had are very difficult for anybody to interpret, you know, staff or ourselves, if you just, when you just look at what they are, they're just really hard to manage. So I appreciate the need to change it. And I think I pretty well agree with what Adi was just saying because I see them as basically, it's an art form that we've decided that, you know, we'd like, we'd like to see in certain districts, and they resonate somewhat with the past, but they're really not, we'd be asking people otherwise to create something that looked like, you know, what was there originally. And we're not at all doing that. We're looking at advertising and artistic form of advertising is what we're kind of looking for. So at least has that quality, that you walk down the street and say, hey, that's kind of interesting, that's, that's an addition because it's a little bit of an artistic expression. But you can't ask the staff to say, you know, this is Picasso, or it's just bad looking, you know? So I agree, we can't really get into that problem. And I think also, just what Michael was saying earlier. Yeah, somebody will come along with a, it'll be a Game of Thrones ad, or the, something for gaming. And it's, it's not gonna look like the iron, the, you know.
Thank you.
With a, or.
Drakken line.
Yeah, or like you were saying earlier, the nice little pink, signs were painted in the office, or with cans or something. It's not going to look like that. It may be very full of emotion. And I don't think we really should be in that business. We'll have to see what happens, if we're not. But I kind of agree with the.
Just a question for the staff. Given that we're agonizing over this, how often have we gotten complaints about these types of signs?
I don't think we get complaints. And in fact, most of the time when the master plans come to public hearing, my memory anyway, we'll double check this, that the community board is pretty much always supportive as well, especially in the district. And they live with them every day.
So the question, if it's not broken, why fix it? Is there anything that, am I missing something that we?
Yeah, yeah, the staff is saying that this is outrageous. It's really outrageous. I mean, I think, you know, what, what Kim and Adi were saying is sort of the same thing as what I'm saying, is this is too restrictive. And we're not, the staff doesn't actually, I don't believe, they don't really, they don't, they don't comment on the aesthetics. That's not what they're looking at. So if there's something outrageous, then, you know, it's gonna come before us. But otherwise, I, I.
If it's graphic and it's, if we're not limiting it, it's good, it's not gonna come before us. As long as we have the six inch border and it's the right size, you can put whatever that you want.
But again, another condition of each ATP is that the applicants have to give us a photo of the sign that they're removing, so that we have that record and that the commission as a whole can periodically assess that.
So as we said, we could, though they're saying the sign is very short in, they're not very, not obvious, but we could say, you know, put further limitations on, on the one time that they need things, see if they're comfortable with what they're saying.
Just, I think it's sort of, I think we're winding up a lot, but I do wanna ask two practical questions to give some guidance for you all. One is, there is a specific issue about these tags. These were never shown to the commissioners, they've never really, supposedly approved, they are everywhere. And the question is whether the staff should be telling the applicants that they can't have them, or they should be with, because they're not, they don't follow the master plan criteria in any way right now, so.
And they are not represented either in the plan or drawings that are provided for the master plan. They are shown in the renderings. But in fact, some applicants have requested that they come forward to amend the master plan to include these additional methods.
And they are there now, and they're not required by any law? So, so I guess the question is, should we, is this message to the staff today, they're not to be permitted? If they want, if applicants want them, then you can come back and amend the master plan?
Or go within the sign.
Or go within the sign.
Within the sign.
Or go within the sign.
A maximum size.
Okay.
So should be sized, the sign should probably be.
Well, they'll, they'll work that out with the advertisers.
Then they have, then they have their own.
So that's, that's one, thank you very much. We needed that guidance. And secondly, I guess the last question is, going forward, if you just go back to that before example, I guess the question is, the standard now seems to be that the applicants want to use this pixel count as a way to talk about background. And I think the question is, should we permit that? Continue to permit that? Or is it resulting in signs that people feel like aren't really what was intended? And should we, should the staff be working with the applicants to come up with a better way? Is it quiet spaces, is it, you know, again, that's sort of solid, you know, again, the camera example, is that the quiet kind of space that we're looking for? Is the wall behind the dare, is that, we're just, we need something other than, because that's, that's the way they do it. You know, they're trying to find a practical way. And I think the applicants are just trying to be practical in their own way of doing, they have to deal with, with their clients, with art departments, with this whole thing.
If you're, if you're saying, I just wanna understand your question. If, if under the staff's proposal, we're abandoning.
I'm saying right now, going forward, with existing signs, how do we judge that? So what is a background? See, that's, currently what it says is X is background. And I guess the question is, is there any, they're using pixels to describe that. It results in, it's hard to predict how it results. And so I guess the question is, should, is the direction here that's okay for now? Let it play itself out? Or does the commission feel like there needs to be another?
Would the staff have some particular guidance on this, or do they not really care?
I think the staff finds it hard.
So I think that, the thing is, is that there are master plans that we've approved that have these very specific criteria. And until those applicants come in and get a different master plan, the staff still has to interpret the forty percent versus the sixty percent.
I would recommend that they do it loosely.
Maybe Michael's idea of drawing a line around whatever's an image, a picture or something versus.
Yeah, figurative.
Figurative.
I mean, it's easier when you look at it in black and white, kind of like using the.
Right, so let's also, how do you approach it?
They're doing everything that's white in this one, and everything that's black in this one.
Right, no, no, one could, one makes a background is just, this image smaller on a white background.
We are introducing that, that we're not going to govern content. We abandoned this entirely, there's no background.
It's just, it's just.
You can't, the existing ones have to continue in place unless they.
Why can't we modify it?
Well, they can come forward.
An applicant has to apply upon that.
Good interpretation. So I guess, I think what you're saying, then, is you say allow the pixel, because that is the law. Like, that's, that's, that's another.
So there's, there's the discussion about how we should think about these going forward, but there are a sort of existing master plans.
Existing master plans, they continue to bring new signs within that master plan. They no longer have those constraints. They, why can't, why do they?
You have to vote on, there has to be a vote, there has to be an amendment. Right now, we're, I said sixty percent will be background, or whatever, X, whatever the rule.
It's flawed.
This is called due process.
I understand.
They proposed a certain criteria and they approved it. And so that certainly going to appropriateness is what that criteria is. So what they could do though, Adi, is they could come to us the next time that there's a sign, and they could say, well, we'd like to have our master plan amended. Is that correct? Yes, that would be, that's what I would do.
Not so quick, not so quick. Because if you're, if you're the owner of the building and you're renting these things out every four months, you don't wanna hire an architect, or hire a specialist to vacuum, make a presentation, get on the calendar, blah, blah, blah. So it's process. It might be worth it to you just to keep on rolling, because you've got a system ready. In fact, you're advertising people, you're painting people, they know what to do.
Do I, how long does it take? I mean, they could be thinking about it from today.
Oh, I know, they always have the option of coming back for the research if they want to. But if they choose not to, so I bet the research may involve a reduction in size as well, which they may choose not to opt for. They may rather go for, go for this and keep the extra five percent.
Right, so then that would be their choice.
So if that's their choice, what the staff is asking, do we give them a direction on how to determine, take the figure versus ground or not? Or do we just continue with the pixel, okay, basically count?
I think we'll have to check around and learn about the pixels.
See, as Michael, you know, can't accurately describe this thing is that the pixel count resulted in a lot of quiet space. And I think that, that's why, you know, and obviously, for the staff, I understand the challenges and the difficulties, but I think the results speaks for itself. I think if you take the ground, the negative space is sort of one of the outcomes of this current approach.
Okay, there goes my recommendation again. Since this is staff interpretation, we can tell the staff that they can be a little more flexible with their interpretation.
Yeah, yeah, that's gonna drive people, some people crazy. It's a lot easier when you're an applicant to have a rule. Say, you know, I'm gonna follow the rule, that's okay.
Okay, so thinking about the drawing a line around the figure part, that how would that apply to the sign?
Sarah, what would these staff like?
You would make the size of the image smaller. You, I think you'd shrink the overall image, that's right, that's what you do. That's the way you get it.
Are you proof of this? I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem with this. Why should they have to make that bit smaller?
All right, so Sarah, can, should we, the staff should continue to let the applicants submit their pixelated count and just work from that and understand that it's gonna be this versus, something's very small for now.
And just, just one thing to note, you won't have too much time to wait to consider this because we have an application for a paint wall master sign just next week. And then there's another one, I think, coming in a couple of days.
So do you want to back forth with the, with your current suggestion?
The criteria forward.
Right, well, will you be suggesting, yeah, this conversation occurred and that there may be things that they could consider? Some of the applicants may actually be here in the room.
Yes, I think I see some of them shaking their heads in the back.
Well, in that case, I think we should be totally random.
You could use your handout today if you want to actually look at some of these signs personally before then, or before one of the upcoming areas, to get a sense of it yourself.